And you're good to go.
Great, thank you Vanessa. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Southboro Board of Selectment September 8th, 2021 meeting at 6:30. This is a virtual Zoom meeting. Let's call the meeting to order at 6:34. And the first item up is public comment. I see we have lots of people in the attendees. If anyone would like to speak under public comment, please raise your hand and we will bring you over. All right, going once, going twice, up, and did he leave? Chris Robbins had his hand up, but I guess he took it down. Okay, so I guess that being said, we will move on. Thank you very much. First item of business is scheduled appointments, volunteer interviews, Trail Committee, Tony Shonar. I hope I'm saying that right. Can we bring him over, Vanessa? Before we start, I'll just let the board know there's currently not an opening on the Trails Committee. I think this ties in with the discussion we're going to have next after the interviews with Kat. So it just seems to make sense to continue on the process. Good evening. Is it Mr. Shonar? Am I saying that right?
Yes, you are. Thank you very much.
Welcome. I appreciate you coming. Just to verify, you were one of the original Trail Committee members. Is that correct?
That's in fact correct. And if I recall correctly, I think I served for two years. And then I took a new job, which required me to frankly just work an awful lot more. And I wasn't going to have time to, you know, spend the time I wanted on the Trails Committee, so I stepped down. But I've always been interested and I'd love to help out again if that's appropriate.
Okay, great. So I guess my first thing would have been for you to kind of introduce yourself. You've kind of semi-done that. Is there anything you'd like to add for the board? Anything that they might like to know about you or your background, or you know, why the special interest now within the Trails Committee?
I've lived in town for 30 years. My kids went through the school system. We love Southboro. I'm an avid walker. I like being outside. I've just always been an advocate for the Trails and so really enjoyed my time the first time around. I think we made good progress. Clearly, the committee has made, continued to make good progress after I left. And if there's a way for me to help now again, I'd love to.
Great. Thank you so much, sir. I'm going to open it up to the board, Ms. Malinowski.
Thank you for coming. Is there anything in particular that you would like to work on related to Trails?
No, I guess nothing comes to mind. I mean, there were a number of different kinds of activities that we were working on when I was on this the first time around. You know, it was engaging with various state agencies, engaging with individuals in the Trails community from other towns. So I spent time last time around working with the folks in Marlborough and Westboro on getting that Burrows Loop Trail kicked off. You know, there was some legal stuff, I mean, and then of course we cleared trails. So, you know, I'm happy to help on any of those things, if again, if it's appropriate.
Mr. Healy.
All right, and I'm going to apologize upfront. I am quite remote tonight, coming to you live from 10,000 feet in Colorado. So there might be some glitches in me, in my hitting my mute, non-mute, etc. So I apologize for all that in advance. Anyway, your interest, I think, is terrific. I suspect you know that the Trails Committee, we have trouble keeping up with them. You know, they've got so many initiatives going on and the like. So I really don't have any questions. I appreciate your interest. And, you know, knock on wood, well, I don't know, knock on wood, I guess we'll have a conversation later about, among other things, the size of the committee. Because we've got a terrific Trails Committee now, so I don't want to have one of them leave. But the possibility of you having, coming on board would be terrific as well.
Thank you, Mr. Stivers.
Thank you, and thank you also for volunteering here. Just a quick question. Do you think that figuring yourself is having a particular expertise that broadens the committee? Important ways, you've mentioned, working with surrounding communities, which is pretty important, and working with state agencies, which is pretty important here as well. Anything else that you can think of that adds capacity or capability to the committee?
You know, honestly, I don't really know much about the current composition of the Trails Committee, so I don't really think I can talk, you know, properly about where I might be able to help, but you know, hopefully I can. And but I don't think I can really answer your question.
Okay, as long as you can operate a weed whacker and a pair of clippers.
So I'm pretty good with weed whackers and clippers and I have a nice pair of walking boots and, but you know.
You check all the boxes. Thank you.
There we go.
Thank you, Mr. Dennyton.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Well, Mr. Shonar, thank you for coming. We'll be discussing your appointment later in the meeting. But again, thank you for stepping forward once again. You know, sometimes things are better the second time around. So hopefully, you know, it'll be a good win all around for everybody. So thank you very much, and we appreciate it.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you. Next up, Noise Bylaw Ad-Hoc Committee. So we had originally interviewed six, I believe it was. Ms. Mudridge had withdrawn, so there were five people from the first go-round, and we've had another seven people step forward. So what we're going to do initially is we'll do our interviews and then further on in the meeting, we'll actually discuss the charge again and seek to do the appointments at that time. So that being said, Vanessa, can you please bring Dr. Kandara forward, please? We'll start there. Thank you. I'm muted, sorry. Good evening. Good evening. How are you tonight?
Good, thank you.
Thank you for coming and thank you for stepping forward for the Noise Bylaw Committee. If you could just take a minute or two and just kind of introduce yourself to the board. A couple of the questions we had asked prior were, you know, what interested you in the Noise Bylaw Committee and how restrictive do you think it should be? So if you could just take the time, introduce yourself and answer those questions, that'll be a great start.
Sure, yeah. I'm a physician. I used to work at the Brigham and Women's Hospital. I'm also an engineer and I work for the National Institutes of Health right now. And, well, I've been living, I guess, in Southboro for about 20 years now. And now that we all work remotely and from home, I guess maybe I'm more acutely aware, but I've noticed that some people have the lawnmowers on at 7:00 in the morning. These are mostly companies and I've spoken to them. And when I did ask them, what about abatement rules? They said there are none in Southboro. Now, I've lived in Wayland and other towns, Western Massachusetts. You know, they do have certain rules and regulations. And I don't think it's a matter of policing. I think it's a matter of having rules, regulations that people understand. I mean, so it's not at 7:00 in the morning. Maybe there are hours of the day. I know they're business people and they need to accommodate a lot of customers. I understand all that. But there are weekends too. And you have some neighbors turn on wood chippers when you're trying to sit in your own backyard. So that kind of thing, maybe, you know, it's just a softening. Now that we all live in the suburbs and we pay a lot of money to live in Southboro, I thought maybe we need some sort of decent regulation.
Great, thank you very much. We'll start with Mr. Healy.
Hi, doctor, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
Are you familiar with the, with the noise bylaw that was on the, on the town warrant this past spring?
No, I'm not. I asked for it and I couldn't really find it. I also saw somebody at the town dump with a poster saying that, you know, you have a noise abatement meeting, but I couldn't make it there. So I'm not. So, I mean, I certainly will educate myself, but I also know the ill health that excessive noise brings, so.
Okay, and you mentioned upfront the idea of, of hours for certain noises. Is that, again, starting out, is that the sort of mindset you have, that a restriction on hours for certain types of noise is an appropriate way to proceed?
Yeah, I'm open to ideas. I mean, I understand, of course, that, you know, you cannot over-regulate the hours. But the fact of the matter is, you know, somebody may be working 10 miles away from you or whatever and making a lot of noise and I won't hear it. It's a proximity and noise levels are important, I understand. I don't know if you have noise levels that the town tries to control. But I would say, yeah, some sort of an understanding of when you can do what is, you know, doesn't have to be overly restrictive. But I'm sure, especially these days when more people spend their time at home, when they're trying to make meetings or have worked all night and want to get some rest in the morning, it makes sense to consider it. I mean, again, it depends on what the committee thinks is wise to do.
Okay, great. Thanks very much. I'm done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stivers.
Thank you. Thanks also for volunteering. And you mentioned the noise level question. There's been a fair amount of conversation about that in the past relative to proposed noise bylaws. Do you have any opinions on the measurement process? For example, we've talked about having decibel meters, etc., and some people want a more subjective approach. Any initial thoughts about how to deal with the actual measurement process?
You know, yeah, you can go as far as measuring, but as I said again, if someone lives three miles away from me, the decibel level at my yard is going to be very low, so it's not going to affect me. So I think to protect everyone, there should be at least something like, you know, things that we know would be noisy, you know, lawnmowers and things like that, that they should be, that most of that work should be done during a certain time when most people are awake and about doing their work. So no, I do not have a quantified level of decibels I'm trying to bring about or anything. I'm not sure how you can enforce that anywhere.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. That answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stivers. Mr. Dennyton.
Hi, good evening, doctor. Thank you for expressing interest. I have two questions. First, could you speak to, you know, what your, the work commitments you have and whether you think you will have time to make, you know, the meetings? And then, second, could you speak to your experience? I don't know if you've served on any other town boards or committees, but could, do you speak to your experience on, you know, working on committees like this where there might be different viewpoints and the goal is to come up with kind of a consensus?
Right. No, I've not been on any town committees, but I've been on zillions of committees, medical, science, and business committees where you're trying to come up with consensus. The first part of your question was, yeah, I do have a busy schedule because, you know, the NIH right now, we're involved a lot of the COVID stuff. But I'm not sure how many meetings you intend to have or what time of the day you intend to have. It all depends on that. And of course, if we have enough volunteers, then it would be okay. I wanted, I wanted to be on the committee because I wanted my input heard. And I'm sure I'm not the only one having spoken to people about the noise levels around the house. So yeah, I'll try to make room. It depends on how, you know, when, when and how frequent the meetings are.
Thank you.
Are you all set, Andrew? Ms. Malinowski?
I don't have any further questions. Thank you for stepping forward.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Ken Diaper. We appreciate you stepping forward. Later in the meeting, we're going to make the appointments to the committee. So again, thank you so much for your time and and thank you for stepping forward and being with us tonight.
I just have one question. Can I look up the noise regulations on the, on the website of the town now?
All that's, sorry, all that's currently on the website is the charge, because the charge of the committee is to create, create the noise.
So I was referring to what Mr. Healy was calling out. Okay, thank you very much. I'm leaving now, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, Vanessa, can you bring Mr. Fling over, please? Good evening, Mr. Fling. Welcome. How are you tonight?
I'm good. How are you guys?
Good. We appreciate you stepping forward and, you know, we had the pleasure of meeting you at our meeting when you actually filled out the form to step forward while you were at our meeting. So again, welcome to you. Kind of the same questions, if you could just kind of introduce yourself to those that are watching in the board. Give us a little background of yourself, what interested you, and how restrictive do you envision the noise bylaw should be?
Perfect. Well, I'm a local homeowner, obviously. I do all my own maintenance here on the property with my spouse. So we are of the citizen mindset of, you know, doing everything ourselves and what does that entail and the hours it entails while working a full-time job. So we bring that sort of philosophy forward, so I definitely embody that. I actually spoke against the bylaw that was proposed at the last meeting. I moved to indefinitely postpone it, thinking that it was overly restrictive to kind of my mindset that I just described. I actually work for a speaker company in town. I have a background in audio media technology, which means that I have an audio engineering degree as well as other forms of media. And I worked at an architectural acoustics firm in an intern position in the past. So I have a background in acoustics and what does that stuff, decibel levels and how to measure it and what, all that sort of transmission.
Great, thank you. Again, thank you for stepping forward. So as we did at the first round of interviews, we'll just continue in the same order that we started with. So I'll jump first to Mr. Healy.
Hi, sir. How are you tonight?
I'm great. Thank you.
All right. I guess I'll ask you, I don't know if you were listening, but a, but a bit of a version of the question I asked to the, to the doctor a second ago. And that is, do you have a, a view going into, if you were on the committee, going into the discussions with the committee about an hour approach to certain, whether commercial or non-commercial, noise in neighborhoods?
Yeah, I mean, my immediate approach would be the look at an hour restriction with a decibel reading at a certain property distance. So you'd measure it from the property line. And I would imagine that you would start with an hour limitation being the easiest thing to enforce. And you just kind of have quiet hours as most other towns that I know would have. So I would, I would consider if there's a commercial and a residential, if it's possible, if it'd be enforceable, if it's not enforceable, then ignore that sort of thing, but start with simply an hour and a decibel level and expand from there. I think the bare minimum requirement would be, be those two things, a decibel level and a time constraint.
And you brought up in your first couple of remarks about you and your wife are home handymen. And it sounds like you do an awful lot of work around your house. And again, I hadn't thought of this before, but curious, do you think that there should be a different approach for commercial entities that are, that are, when it comes to noise versus homeowners who are doing, because as you said, there's a there are employment hours that might impact when you can do work on your property?
Yeah, I would say off the cuff, probably, it'd be nice if there was a way to do it, but it'd probably be very hard to enforce. So as having a two different, a commercial versus a residential zoning for noise ordinances, I think that would become, you know, it could be a fool's errand to try to enforce that effort and that endeavor. But I think it's something that should be looked at, it should be explored. Is it viable to consider something like that? But yes, I mean, being a home repair person of a historic 200-year-old house, you know, that it comes with certain kind of qualifications and needs and time constraints around a full-time work schedule.
Okay, great. I'm all set. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Stivers.
Thank you. Thanks, Tim, for applying here and good to see you. We've chatted about this a couple of times independently. I guess one of the questions that I continue to struggle with is how do we do something like this that is reasonable for commercial landscaper operations, which I know have been the source of a number of noise concerns historically? And obviously, they have great interest in being able to remain in business in town. Any thoughts about how we might do something that doesn't unreasonably impinge on their economic livelihood?
Yeah, I think you start with that by just simply reaching out to the companies that work in town. There's, there's several that I see the trucks around and just generally find out from them, when they try to do business, what are their preferred hours? What's the earliest they would want to start, the latest that they could reasonably go? And start with the conversation that that begins with. I think that if it's overly restrictive, it's not going to work for anybody and it's not going to be enforceable. So, I mean, we have plenty of people in town. I came on my street that there's two neighbors that seem to take care of their own property. So we can't be overly restrictive since we have such a large base of customers in this area. I'm not sure what the final way to enforce it and come about it, but I think that there could be, definitely be a solution there with, with looking at what hours these companies need to do business and then backtrack from there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Mr. Dennyton.
Thank you, Mr. Fling. I don't, I don't have any questions for you, but you spoke very directly to a lot of the things that I was interested in and I was interested to hear your point of view. I'm also someone that does most of my own yard work and that colors my own perspective on this. But I also, you know, want to be respectful of people that make a very sensible decision to hire someone to do it to save some time. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew Chelsea.
Thank you for stepping forward. I don't have any further questions either, but I appreciated your responses. Thank you.
Great. Tim, thank you for stepping forward. As I said, we're going to be discussing this later in the meeting and doing the appointments then. But again, thank you for stepping forward. Thank you for taking the time tonight to come and answer our questions. It's greatly appreciated.
No problem. Thanks for having me.
Thank you. Take care. Vanessa Shawn Rose. Good evening, Mr. Rose. How are you tonight? Welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me.
Thank you for stepping forward. Just a couple of the same basic questions that I'm kind of asking everybody. If you could tell, tell us a little bit about yourself. Tell us what interested you in the noise bylaw and just generally how restrictive you think your thoughts are on how it should be.
Yes, so my wife and I moved to Southboro a little over a year ago. So we're new homeowner and residents here in the neighborhood. So, and since we've moved here, I've been looking for ways to try to be more active and involved with our town and community. So when I saw the email notice go out for, you know, we're looking for volunteers for the news committee here, I thought I'd step up. I do have a little bit of, you know, free time, you know, we're not, we don't have kids yet, so I'm not taking the kids to sports every day. So I can adjust that time for, you know, volunteer at the town. So since we do own our home, we do quite a bit of the yard work ourselves, but we also hire, you know, contractors here and there when we can't take of it. I'm pretty impartial to how strict it can be right now, but you know, is that fine line, trying to find that balance between, like, when we do the yard work ourselves, you know, before, after work, that type of stuff. So I work from home now, remote work from, because of the COVID situation. I'm an engineering manager for an electrical company, like electrical products. So though I may not have town experience working on committees and doing town regulations, the products we build have, are government regulated, UL regulated, that type of stuff. So working with you know, that type of regulations and listings and, you know, where a lot of my work experience comes from today. So and then, in a younger in my life, I used to live and work near Philadelphia. And when I owned a condo there, that is also part of the Board Association there. Little bit different when it's a condo and you just have neighbors through your wall instead of across the street, but mowing your grass. But you know, there's some things that common sense needs to apply, you know, that the rules aren't there. Like you shouldn't be mowing your grass, you know, at 4:00 AM in the morning, right? That type of stuff. But I think one of the things of becoming educated about this, whoever is on the committee, you know, is looking around, you know, what is the precedent being set by the other towns in the neighborhoods in the area? And even across the state or country, you know, and finding that fine line with the commercial, the residential and everybody in town, so.
Great, thank you so much and welcome to Southboro. And just know that at one time, we were all new volunteers to the town. So we do appreciate you stepping forward. Mr. Healy.
Yeah, no, I'm good. Sir, you addressed some of the questions that I might have asked and I think you have a, you have a nice perspective that you would bring. So but I don't have any specific questions for you.
Okay, great. Mr. Stivers.
Thank you, and thanks also for volunteering here. Just a quick question. You mentioned the fine line here between commercial, residential, etc. How do you, how do you come up with an approach that, again, is reasonable for the residents who are looking for peace and quiet? And yet provides reasonable opportunity for the commercial landscapers to do their business in ways that aren't too disruptive to residents? Is there any, do you have any thoughts about what kind of structure might work best for that?
My thoughts on that, like, your line, that is a fine line. And unfortunately, it's a subjective one, right? It's very hard to put qualitative data towards that to figure out what, you know, a solution might be. But that's where I think coming with the president sets forth, you know, what have other areas done before? You know, what's in place now? You know, those communities have gone through the same challenges that we've had. So reflecting on that, and the other side that would be, would be the input of the community itself, right? We need the input from the residents to help us, you know, us and the board and everybody to make some type of decision on what is the best for the community. You know, people need to step up and, you know, do whatever, it's a survey or, you know, out at a town function, we collect that type of data, but we need the involvement from the community too. So.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you, Sam. Mr. Dennyton.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. I don't really have any questions because, again, you spoke directly to the relevant points and thank you for your interest.
Thank you, Andrew. Ms. Malinowski.
Thank you for coming in, throwing your hat in the ring. I just had a comment that I appreciated what you said about input from residents. That was one of my provisions to the original charge was that we hold forums for residents and businesses to come and speak to this Noise Bylaw Committee. So that, that's an important point for me. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Rose, for stepping forward. Again, welcome to town. We'll be discussing and appointing later in the meeting. But again, thank you for for making the effort to come here tonight and to have a discussion with us. So thank you very much and have a great night.
Same to you.
All right. Vanessa, can we bring Mr. Mellow in, please? Good evening, Mr. Mellow. Very cool speed racer graphic. Are you with us? Give him just a second. Mr. Mellow, are you with us?
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you. Welcome. Good evening.
Good evening. You're gonna ask the same type of questions, right?
Yeah, so basically, yeah, so just basically introduce yourself to us, you know, give us an idea of why you'd like to serve on the Nice Noise Bylaw Committee and your thoughts on how restrictive it should be.
Great. My name is John Mello. I've been in town for over 20 years. My wife, for full disclosure, runs or owns the Southboro blog. So just, one of the reasons I've, I guess, signed up to volunteer is because my wife pushed me into it to try to help. My history is I'm an engineer by nature. I'm an executive now, but I've had history managing numerous projects, including acoustics, but that's not as important as the fundamental reason I think I can bring to the table is my sort of bringing out the unknowns. So as an example, everybody's talking about, you know, commercial landscaping and people cutting their grass. But you know, what happens if there's a snowstorm and somebody needs to get to work by 6:00? All of a sudden, they're snowblowing their driveway at 5:00. How do we handle that? So I'm trying to bring a perspective, you know, that my other people might not bring, although the previous interviewer mentioned about, you know, getting more and more feedback from residents, which would hopefully bring those questions up. So my, my bias is to be less intrusive, meaning minimal laws as possible. So, and I don't have any specific recommendations, meaning it's hourly or noise, decibels and so forth. All those things have positives and negatives. So I'm coming to this open-minded and just trying to help and being a good citizen. So I'm coming to this open-minded, um, and just trying to help and being a good citizen to the town.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, we appreciate you stepping forward and Mr. Healy.
Um, hi, Mr. Mellow. How are you doing tonight?
Hello, former neighbor.
I know. You left the best neighborhood in town. How could you do that? Uh?
Uh, I did because I keep losing power in the new neighborhood and that old neighborhood's lost power.
All right. Um, just I have one, um, uh, very quick question. Uh, were you familiar with the noise by law that was proposed? For this past spring's town meeting? I guess I have two questions. And if you were, did you have any views about it?
Uh, I did and I actually spoke at the meeting. Um, you know, I, I'm not against the, the noise by law. Um, I thought it was too. Actually, I thought it would, the, uh, the committee that created it didn't have enough time to really funnel out a real proposal that was enforceable. And reasonable. Um, and that's why I spoke up. Cause, uh, you know, I, I do all my yard work, except I have a commercial lawnmower, which is kind of loud, but you know, I wait until past eight, nine to do it. Um, but I have noticed that once in a while, uh, landscaping companies do start well before seven and. You know, it's, uh, uh, I can see how some people could get annoyed at that.
Okay, that's all I've got, except to comment that you've got the best, um, visual so far tonight.
Oh, sorry, I'm traveling, so.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Stivers.
Thank you, and thanks also for volunteering here. Um, just one quick question to, have you served on other town committees previously?
I haven't and, uh, uh, I think, thanks to my wife, I might have to more invite, you know, sign up for more committees. But, uh, yeah, we've been in town for 20 years, so, uh, uh, this is the first one.
That's a very wise reason. I'll confirm certainly. So, uh, that does it for me. Thank you, Andrew.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Hi, Mr. Mellow. Um, could you just speak to what kind of time commitment you have? Um. And, you know, I think it's an important question to ask because I, you know, the committee will be kind of self-organizing, I think, in terms of. When it can meet.
Yeah.
But, um, you know, go ahead.
Yeah, honestly, you know, uh, you know, two years ago I would be traveling a lot more, so it'd be harder. I guess there's always a silver lining with everything. So with COVID, we're all working from home or local. So, you know, in essence I work from home. So, you know, we're getting. 10, 20 hours extra a week of less of travel and, and so forth. So, yeah, I, I am committed to, uh. To allocate the time required and I think there's somebody else in my house that would force me to make that time.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Malinowski.
Thank you, Mr. Mellow for stepping forward. I do not have any further questions.
All right, great. Thank you so much, Mr. Mellow, for stepping forward. As I said, uh, prior, we'll be discussing this later on in the agenda, but. We appreciate you stepping forward and I, I tell you what, it is refreshing for the board to see a lot of new people step forward as well. Um, so this has really been great and it's been a pleasure meeting you. So thank you very much and have a good night.
Thank you.
Um, Vanessa, Mr. Stanton, please. Good evening, Mr. Stanton. Are you with us?
Hello.
Hi, good evening. Welcome. And I'm sure you've kind of heard the questions, so we'll just give you the opportunity to introduce yourself. Kind of give us an idea of why you'd like to serve and, um, you know, how restrictive or non-restrictive you think this should be.
Sure. Yeah, so, uh, my name is Patrick Stanton. Uh, my wife and I moved to Southborough in April. Um, so we're new residents, new homeowners. Um, I have a background in public policy. It's my, my full-time job. Um, I do a lot of it. I work with state and local governments a lot. Um, so I have a general interest in public policy and I have an interest in getting involved with the town. Which is, you know, why I wanted to be joining the committee. Um, so in terms of restrictedness, um, you referenced the earlier proposed law this past spring. Um, I generally found that law too restrictive, um, both because it was somewhat unenforceable. And it just seems to present too many obstacles, uh, for homeowners, uh, like myself. Um, like the gentleman earlier, I do a lot of my own work at the house, do a lot of my own yard work. Um, so making sure that there's enough local room for folks like me to do, to do sort of things. But I'll, you know, I believe that every public policy needs to have good, it, it, good stats and good information to work with. Um, so I'm hoping that I can help present, you know, some, some new ideas to the, to the committee.
Great. Thank you so much. Welcome to town and, uh, thank you again for stepping forward and we'll go to Mr. Healy.
Uh, yeah. Um, hi, Mr. Stanton. How are you doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm well, thanks. Um, actually slightly different question based on, on the description of what you do. Do you, um, in your professional career, do you have cities and towns as clients?
Uh, not as clients per se, but we help them develop policy. It's specifically regarding the education.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, uh, has, has the town of Southborough ever been a client of yours?
No, no.
No, okay. All right. Um, again, uh, terrific. We, and I, I don't know if you've been watching the other interviews. We've had a terrific crew of people and, and, uh, you add to that. Um, and I really appreciate the fact that, uh, that you've, uh. Uh, as I think as Ms. Malinowski said, thrown your hat in the ring. So thanks very much.
Mr. Stivers.
Thank you. Thanks also for stepping forward. Just one question in terms of, uh, enforcement. Uh, do you have any initial thoughts on the trade-off between subjective enforcement and, uh? Technical enforcement with the decibel meters and so on and so forth? Uh, any thoughts about what works, what doesn't work there?
So I think in terms of enforcement, you know, I did a brief look at what other cities do. We, we originally in Somerville before we moved to Southborough. I know looked at their, 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 their laws. And it kind of gave a range, like the, not just doesn't, not just the hour which the noise happens, but the duration. So if a noise happens quickly, you know, for five minutes, it's probably not enough to, to, to warrant some sort of action. But it's happening for somewhere hours. That's a different story. So I think to approach your question from that perspective, you know, trying to, like. It, it might depend on what the, you know, what the actual sound and the duration of what's happening.
So if the jackhammer hits every five minutes, 24 hours a day, may or may not.
It's overall.
It is, it is a challenging task. So thanks very much. Appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Mr. Dennyton.
Um, thank you very much for your, uh, for your interest and, um, I don't have any questions that really haven't already been, been asked in some way, shape before. Thank you.
Great. Ms. Malinowski.
Um, thank you for volunteering and I do not have any further questions either. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Stanton, again for stepping forward. Welcome to town. Uh, the board will be discussing later. Um, within the meeting, we'll be, uh, appointing, um, to the committee, but again, we, we appreciate the effort you've coming here tonight, having a conversation with us. And, uh, it was great to meet you. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Take care, everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Perrin, Vanessa, please. And Vanessa, thank you so much for bringing him in and out. Much appreciated. Good evening, Mr. Perrin. Are you with us?
There you go. Now you should be able to hear me.
All right. Good evening, sir. Welcome. I'm sure you've probably heard some of the, the commentary that we've asked, so, uh, if you could just.
I took, I took some notes.
Okay, perfect. So again, just welcome, welcome to you. Introduce yourself to us, why you'd like to serve and, and your thoughts on the, the restrictiveness of the by law.
So, my name is Lee Perrin. Uh, I'm an anesthesiologist. Uh, so I just retired, uh, in the, the end of February from a 40-year career. At mostly St. Elizabeth's Medical Center in Boston. I've lived out here since, uh, 2003. And now that I'm retired, not only am I spending a lot of time at home, uh, but I also have a lot more free time as well. Uh, the, uh, some of the things which I've done over the course of my career is I've been on a lot of committees. I've been on a lot, uh, I've been very active at the, uh, at both the state and the national level and professional medical societies. Uh, I've been a bylaw chair of at least four or five different organizations. Uh, so I'm sort of familiar with looking at bylaws, but I'm not a lawyer, so I don't write bylaws. Uh, the, so that's, that's some of my, um, my background. I work by consensus. Uh, you know, uh, I, I like being on committees. My wife will tell you that I'm on way too many committees. Uh, cause I still volunteer at the Mass Medical Society. Uh, by way of, of full disclosure, right, it was in my application. But you should know that, uh, the anesthesiologists here in Massachusetts have a political action committee. That contributes to statewide candidates, uh, uh, generally, uh, state reps and state senators. And I've been the president of that PAC since the 1980s or so. Uh, my legal counsel for the PAC says that I do not run afoul with any town rules. As long as I receive no compensation or nothing that could be deemed compensation. And it doesn't sound like participating on this committee is going to run me afoul of that. Uh, I will say all the people that I've heard come before me, I'd be happy with any of them, uh, uh, to be on the committee with me. Uh, all right, so that's my background. Uh, I have had the opportunity to take a look at the town warrant. While the others were talking and, uh, my feeling is it seems to be a little too prescriptive. Uh, I think that it could benefit by getting some additional input, uh, from both the members of the committee. Uh, from the Board of Selectment and from members of the town. So that I would foresee, you know, having, you know, potentially an open hearing, uh, by the committee and then, uh. Uh, pre-publishing, uh, whatever we proposed on the, on the Southborough website. Looking at comments and then going back in an iterative fashion, uh, to come up with something that we thought would, uh, would be. You know, something that would pass a town meeting. Um, in terms of, you know, approaches to the, uh, to this, uh, I think that. Hours have to be part of it. Uh, I, I don't see any way around that. Uh, you know, when I listen to, you know, some of the people who came before me, you know, and if, if I think about it, if I'm. If, if I run a landscape company and the only town in the area that doesn't have a noise by law that prevents me. From say, working before, say, nine o'clock, I'm going to go to Southborough at seven, so I can get those people and still be able to take the other people on. So that, uh, by not having a bylaw, uh, we open ourselves up to having noise both earlier and later. And I think that's something that the committee needs to, uh, needs to take out into account. I do favor having the same rules for everyone, whether you are a contractor or whether you're a homeowner. And so therefore the, the rules have to be, um, you know, lax enough that somebody who is, uh, not retired like me can come home. Uh, and mow their lawn at six o'clock, uh, you know, uh, without worrying about, uh, getting a phone call. Uh, the, uh. And I think that pretty much covers just about everything that, uh, that you were asking the others.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Healy.
Uh, doctor, you took very good notes. So you've, you've, you've covered any questions that I, I might have had for you. Uh, as well as some that I didn't, but, but, uh, was informative anyway. So thanks very much.
I, I will say that one of the reasons for, for, for why now is I've always had an interest in town government. Uh, you know, I was a speaker of the, uh, House of the Massachusetts Medical Society. And, uh, for, uh, for three years. And, uh, I thought at one point about running for town moderator, but decided that I didn't want to. I have a habit of losing elections, so.
Well, at some point, I'd like to have a conversation with you about the, uh, the, um, uh, the PAC that you're involved with. It sounds pretty interesting. But, uh, no questions about the noise committee.
All right, Mr. Stivers.
Thank you. Also, thanks for volunteering. One quick question. Any experience on other town committees before this?
No, this is my first.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Mr. Dennyton.
Uh, thank you, doctor. Um, I also don't have any questions, but thank you very much for, uh, your in, interest.
Ms. Malinowski. Again, thank you for volunteering and I do not have any questions.
For benefit of taking notes.
I know. All right. So thank you so much for stepping forward. Uh, we, it was a pleasure to meet you and, uh. Again, we'll be discussing this, uh, later in the meeting and, um, making our appointments done. So thank you so much. Have a great night.
You, you too.
Thank you. Vanessa's two steps ahead of me with Mr. Goodney. Good evening, Mr. Goodney.
Yes, can you see me?
I can't see you.
I don't know why you couldn't.
We'll give you a second. Uh, there you are. Good evening, welcome. Uh, you're muted though, but, uh. I'm sure you've heard what, what everybody has to say for, for those members on the board that may not be aware. Uh, Mr. Goodney has served. I know that's one of the questions that will come up, has, uh, served the town, uh, very well before. So thank you for deciding to step forward again. Kind of same questions. Just tell us a little bit about yourself, why now and, um, you know, your thought process on the noise by law.
Sure, um, I've lived in town 23 years. Uh, then I'm a retired police sergeant for the town of Westboro. So I kind of know firsthand what it is to try and deal with some of these, uh, these noise complaints when they come in on both sides, uh, both sides of the fence. Um, I also, my police career, um, spent probably 10 years working the midnight shift. So I know what it's like to sleep during the day and be affected by all kinds of noises that everybody else doesn't realize that they make. Um, part of my history is, uh, I, I was the chairman of, of the municipal facilities committee. Uh, about 10 years ago, that committee was in place and, uh, since then I was on the public safety building study committee. And, uh, built an actual building committee. Um, some things that I think we should be thinking about with the by law is. Uh, we should look at some days in the week. Um, what we're going to do for certain days of the week, um, certain times of the day we need to look at. I think we need to look at maybe some levels of, uh, noise, um, maybe some, uh, zoning, uh. Areas that, um, you know, what, what we're going to allow in certain zones, maybe like an industrial zone as opposed to residential zone. And also the areas between those zones, if there's a distance involved. Um, I also feel there should be some sort of delineation between commercial work and somebody working on their house. Um, and also I think we should take into account maybe the duration of the noise and the frequency of the noise. Uh, and, and, and overall, we, we definitely have to take everybody into account. I think I can remember my thoughts when I was at town meeting and I did hear the proposal. Everybody was saying to themselves and some were actually voicing it, I'm not going to be able to do this or this is going to change and that's going to change. So we have to get all those things out in advance before the thing's going to go forward. And I found. In my, in past experience with the, uh, the building committee, uh, obviously we had to air all those problems before we were ever going to get anywhere. And as you know, we, we ended up with, with a, what I thought a reasonable facility. Um, also what, from a police standpoint, I think the, the by law should be relatively clear and simple to understand. Um, if it's, if it's, you know, more than, you know, it can't be 10 pages long and you need a, you know, a lot of grit to get through it. A lot of times when you deal with people, you know, people are upset. It just needs to be very easy to, you know, this is what it says and, and this is how we act. Also, I think, um, it's been my experience that, you know, with development of the town, um, if you have people that border. Um, areas that are getting developed and the, the part of the building permit process should also have. Some, some noise, uh, work stoppage, uh, start or, you know, start and stop times in the building permit. That will kind of take away a lot of, you know, so everything's written right in there. You can't start equipment at seven o'clock or whatever it is. Uh, you can't idle equipment, you know, I, I, I can speak in Westboro. We had a lot of, uh, development and we were always getting calls. Cause they'd stop their equipment up at six o'clock, but they wouldn't start work till seven. Cause they'd be greasing it and this, that, you know, we're going to make sure that. You know, the, a building department takes, does, does what, you know, they should too, and that should be part of the building permit. So the rules are, are, are well-known, but. Um, I had the ability to listen to everybody else's interview and all your questions, so I did jot down a lot of those notes. I think I pretty much. Covered everything that, uh, was asked and I did look up the, um, the proposal as best I could. Um, and it, you know, I just thought it just needed some more polish and maybe some more, um, some of the things that I spoke of. And need to be addressed a little bit more clearly.
Wow, that was great. Okay. Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Healy.
No, um, uh, very interesting thoughts, uh, some things I hadn't thought about, uh, in terms of the, um, of the, the potential noise, um, by law. So I appreciate that. Uh, but you're right, uh, whether you took notes or otherwise, you covered the terrain. So I'm good and appreciate your, uh, coming forward.
Mr. Stivers.
Thank you. Thanks, Pete. You actually hit the questions that I had as well, so I'm all set. Thanks very much.
Mr. Dennington.
I'm also all set. Thank you very much, Mr. Goodney.
Ms. Belanowski.
Again, thank you for stepping forward, Mr. Goodney. The town's been well-served by your experience in the past, so appreciate you stepping forward.
Alright, great. Again, thank you for stepping forward. Did I, congratulations on your retirement, I guess, if you wanna call it that. Yeah. And, you know, we're gonna be discussing this later in the meeting and making the appointments done. But again, thank you for stepping forward. Thank you for all you've done for the town in the past as well. And have a great rest of the night.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, that being said, next on the agenda, Kathryn McPhee Trails Committee update on the Aqueduct Trail Connector project and potential revisions to the committee charge. Good evening, Kathryn, welcome.
Good evening.
Thanks. There you are.
So should we just get started with maybe the Aqueduct Trail is the easier of the two to?
Sure.
Okay, so I think everyone's had an opportunity to review your packet. Basically, I'm coming before the board on behalf of the Trails Committee to bring this project to your attention and let you know that we have an Eagle Scout that is interested in pursuing this. And if he wants to do it this fall, then he'll be presenting to the board if, if required. And so I'm here to just brief you on the project, let you know this is an opportunity for the Trails Committee to expand the Aqueduct Trail, a connector from the existing trail onto the Aqueduct off of Pine Hill Road, describe a little bit of the construction, and ask the board what the next steps are, if you need to vote to approve this, or do you wanna have the Eagle Scout come before you and present his project? So I'm here to, to do that.
Great. So typically, we do have the Eagles go come forward, just so we have the opportunity to meet them. But this is a great pre-pitch to it, Kathryn. Just one question on the timeline. The, once the existing permit has been amended, has that process started already, and where are you at in the timeline on that?
Thank you. Yes, we have reached out to MWA. I've done a site walk with Sean Nevin of MWA, so he has all the information he needs to amend the existing eight M permit. So that's underway, and we're just waiting for that, to, that process to go through legal. And they thought that amending the existing permit would be much easier than executing a new one.
And did they give you a timeframe? I'm just trying to think ahead. If we, if we have this young man come in, obviously, we don't wanna hinder the process in any way, so.
Right. No, I appreciate that. So I have asked for that to happen early, you know, as soon as possible. I don't have an exact timeline from MWA of when that's gonna take place, but my understanding is that it will happen in the next couple months. But, you know, my understanding and the state agency's understanding can be slightly different at times.
Yeah, so obviously, just keep us updated on this as well. And as soon as you get some form of, of okay and sign off, you know, our, our next agenda moving forward, we can certainly do something. So I, I think this is great. I think another, any additions to our trails are just a fabulous opportunity. So I will open it up to the board. Mr. Stivers, any questions or comments on this?
Yeah, I do have a quick question. A great idea here, I think. Wonderful to open this up here if we can. I recall recently that we had an Eagle Scout project through the Concom that generated some amount of concern on the part of the neighbors in the area that the project was, was addressing. Do you have any input or concerns about impact on the neighborhood here? Are they supported, do you know, or?
It's a very good question, and we do have to do public outreach. So something we need to do, MWA has asked us to be responsible for ensuring that the trail, we have, they have a small easement, as if you look at the, the packet, an easement that we have to make sure that we're building the trail on and that we're not encroaching on our neighbors' properties. So one of the steps we'll have to take is to survey the plot. So I'm waiting for the Eagle Scout to, we're just connecting on a few details for him to reach out and do that. And then we'll be reaching out to the neighbors and asking them and making sure that they're comfortable with the process. And so out of that conversation, Sam, it may be that, you know, you know, if something comes up, we'll have to address it.
Is there a plan to, for example, put a fence along the border of the accessway to keep folks from wandering into private property? Or how, is that marked? How, what's the plan for that?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the one property that is on, I, I don't know how to describe what side of it, the north side is, does have a fence, so that's not gonna be a problem. It's a wooded area, so we're gonna be far enough away from the southern neighbor that people aren't gonna miss and go into someone's yard. There's only, I think, I wanna say there's two, two neighbors that would be impacted, possibly a third, depending on the property lines, if there's, maybe there might be one kind of along the, along the, the power lines there that could have a little L-shaped piece, but.
Good. As long as that's on the list to look into, that's great. Again, great project, and I hope it moves forward quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Mr. Dennington.
Hi, thank you very much. Certainly, I think that if you wanna get it executed on in the fall, makes sense to start working on it. So I'm, I'm very supportive of this. Just one question. Where the trail had at Pine Hill Road, would there be a plan eventually to have some type of a parking or a sign there? And then also, you look at the map, the, the, the point at which the trail hits Pine Hill Road is actually in Framingham. It's like a, just like maybe a couple of feet, the way I read it. Is there any issue posed by that?
Yeah, and so this, the way this line is drawn, maybe slightly off, that it is near the Southborough-Framingham town line, but if you look, if you're at the site and you see where the, the sign is, it's a little bit further down the road. But we are and have been in touch with, not this year, we're, last year when we were working with the Bay Circuit Trail Connector that does connect, it, it flows into Framingham. So I had to speak and work with the Parks and Rec Director in Framingham. So I gave him a heads up that we would be working on this. So we will be reaching out to him because we want to let him know, number one, that this section is opening up, and he can, he's working on the other end. And so the idea is that, that the two would meet. It's not a perfect straight line because this, this western aqueduct ends up going underground. And so I'm working with MAPC. They have a plan to go through a neighborhood to kind of circle around that area and then reconnect to where the aqueduct comes above board again. So, so yes, we'll be working with Framingham on that.
And then about like a, a sign or any parking?
Thank you, yes. Parking, I'm not gonna, I cannot promise that there's gonna be any parking at this location because if you, Pine Hill is a very narrow road, and there aren't any, I don't think there are sidewalks. But even parking here for a site visit is tricky. So, and I'm pretty sure, you know, right now, there is a little paved section at that gate that could accommodate a car, but you don't wanna block the aqueduct if MWA, for example, needed access to it. So probably not initially, but if we had, you know, dreams and ambitions, we might be able to work something out in the future. But yeah, that's not gonna be a primary spot to, to park for connection.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Belanowski.
Thank you. It sounds like a great project, and you addressed my question with the town line, so I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Mr. Healy.
Yeah, hi Kathryn, great stuff as always. And in terms of the, the Boy Scouts, the Eagle Scouts, it, it's a real highlight for us to hear from them. I mean, it was interesting, I, I was, I was lucky enough to be, there, there had been a backlog because of COVID of recognition for Eagle Scouts in, in Southborough. And there was a whole contingent of them this last spring. And one of the things I said, and this falls right into it, is that the town of Southborough owes an incredible debt of gratitude to these kids for the, for the ingenuity, for the creativity, and for the doggedness that they exhibit. So, yeah, it's not a, boy, we need to hear from somebody before we, you know, think about giving someone the green light. We love to hear about these projects, just, just as I said, because of the, the work, creativity, et cetera, that these kids put into it. So otherwise, I think it's a great project.
Yeah, thanks Marty for that. I, I will give a shout out to Tru92. We've, we've been really lucky this year. They had a group going through a community service merit badge. And so we had about, I don't know, six to nine scouts that were able to give us twenty-five hours. So they helped clean up the trails. They did nine eleven loop. They reconstructed a trail on self and town property at the Watkins and Templeman off of Route eighty-five. They also helped the Open Space Preservation Committee with some garden work at the Beals Preserve. And then they're doing more trail maintenance for us because they have more hours. So we've been really lucky this year, just with that group in particular. But in every year that, that they can come forward, it's been, it's such a great resource. The parents too, I just have to give a shout out to all of the parents that come out and help us do trail, trail work. It's just incredible, the amount of partnership and the benefit that Southborough gets from all of the scouts.
Great, thank you. I just have one, one follow-up question, Kathryn, if I may. So while there's potentially no parking at this end, what is connected at the other end? I mean, can you just kind of explain to somebody that may not be familiar with the trails, where this connects to, and is there parking available there?
Yes, and so let me share screens, give me just a second. Oh, I've been disabled to participate in screen sharing. Lucky you.
Hold on two seconds, we'll get that taken care of.
Okay, let's see if I can get my screen to show. Okay, so I'm gonna change to Google Maps. Can you see my Google Map? Or do you?
Not yet.
I have to hit share.
There we go.
Okay, yes, great. Okay, so it's a little tricky to see. Let me see if I can pull up them. I have my maps up here, but I've gotta get rid of this. Okay, there we go. Okay, so what we're looking at here is, this is Route thirty. The Fayetteville Dam and the MWA complex is back here. This is the BCT, the Bay Circuit Trail Borough Loop Connector that we reconstructed last year. It's also part of the aqueduct. So this is Stony Brook, and I, I don't know if you're familiar with the border, the Framingham-Southborough boundary near this really small Route thirty bridge. So there's a little access point here. This trail that we're looking at doing will connect, you see western aqueduct green here? So it's gonna connect the five hundred and twenty-seven feet, whatever it is, from this point straight across to the western aqueduct. And so how that works with the, 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 the big trail section that we're trying to do, this is the peninsula. So the access road, if you see my mouse moving, goes like this. And so our trail is going to go, the Bay Circuit Trail, I mean, this is the Borough Loop, sorry, and the aqueduct goes all the way, and we have permission to cross here, build a little boardwalk, cross Stony Brook, and connect to this section here. So then it will then go on to Pine Hill and across this way. Does that make sense?
It, it does. And just one, again, I'm gonna do one more follow-up, and then I will, I will move on from this. So on the Framingham side, if you went back to Pine Hill and you expanded it, it showed the, the, was it the Western Aqueduct? Is that what it's called?
Yes, yeah, right here.
Is there any thought process from Framingham, maybe, in your discussions and maybe connecting all of these trails and doing something? Or is there already connectivity there?
Well, so there is a gate here, there's a little gatehouse. The gate is no long, you know, no trespassing right now. But the idea of what the aqueduct and what MWA has, has done when they opened up the aqueduct trail is to connect all of them as much as you can. So yes, the idea is for Framingham to open up their side. They, I think, had some butter issues at the very end. But the idea is to connect them. So we'll go straight into Framingham when this all comes, you know, connects. It will be a little, like I said, when the, the aqueduct goes under into a tunnel, then we have to go through a little bit of a neighborhood, and then we reconnect to the, the trail on the other side of that. So, so yeah, we'll be working with Framingham to, to do that connection.
Okay, no, that's, that's, that's awesome. I mean, building the connectivity of the trails is a pretty awesome thing. So that's great, very much appreciate that. Any further questions from anybody on this before we move on to part two? Nope, I think we're good. Alright Kathryn, you're all set to talk about revisions to the committee charge and your reasons for wanting to consider them, us to consider them.
Great. So again, thanks for your time on this. This is something, the expansion of the committee in some form has been on our mind for a couple of years. We've reached out to Jim Hegarty a while back and explored some options. Not really sure what the best approach was for us. And the idea, as I kind of outlined, without going into all the detail, is basically, we want to, we don't wanna expand quorum because we, we did have an issue meeting quorum before COVID. And we've been advised by a number of very wise people to, to maybe not consider expanding beyond five. But it would be really helpful and to have a couple of extra people who are dedicated to the committee, but maybe they don't quite have enough time to come to every committee meeting, but they have skills and time, you know, to, to participate and want to. So that's, that's why we were thinking about that. And so this idea of associate, we're calling it, non-voting associate members came up. And I spoke with you, Lisa, and Mr. Purple about that a while, you know, a few, a month or more ago, about the option of, of discussing whether we can expand and have a couple of other seats, or not seats, you know, whatever we wanna call them, so that we can, especially as we're approaching this next year, we have a lot of work coming up. We're building the Peninsula Trail, we could use the help. Trails maintenance in general is, is hard labor. And so having a few extra hands for that is always helpful. And again, I think, and we do have two people, you met Tony, who was an original Trails Committee member, and that's wonderful that he's available and interested in coming back. And I spoke with him about his interest in this, serving in this capacity, and he, he was interested. And we have another member, another resident, Will Warren, who also serves on a number of committees here in town. And he's interested in serving also in that capacity. So it's a wonderful opportunity to have a couple of extra hands where we need them. And they also bring, as I noted in the documentation, they bring a diverse background. You know, Will, for example, serves on the ADA Committee, and this new trail that we're working on, we're hoping to have part of it is, is, is qualified as ADA. So it'd be great to have his skills and experience in that way as well. So that's really what we're trying to do. And we're, after looking into it, understanding that, I didn't realize it at the time, but, you know, an ad hoc committee is, is a committee that's generally formed for a project, and then, you know, it might, might end. And so I was like, oh, let's, let's think about perhaps changing the charge on a longer-term basis, something that we, I know we'd have to go to town meeting on in the spring, and, you know, create a standing committee if, if the board were open to considering that.
Great, Kathryn, thank you. I know we had spoken, Andrew, I'm gonna toss this to you in just two seconds. I thought a lot about this, Kathryn, since we've had the discussions on, on what potentially might be, be the best way to do this. I mean, I, I will say, and I'll, I'll come back around to me, though. I mean, I have some concerns with adding associate and non-voting members for a variety of reasons. Have you guys given any thought to like a Friends of Trails? You know, there are a lot of committees that have friends groups that are, that are very active, but they're not an actual member of the committee. And again, and Andrew, I apologize, I'll, I'll come back and save the rest of my comments till after you. But I was just curious on that piece, if you had given any thoughts, anything like that.
So, I mean, when you ask about a friends group, are you referring to a 501(c)(3) type of friends group, like the recreation has? That's a little bit more in-depth than we were hoping to have, or is this a non, you know, an informal kind of friends group?
Yeah, I mean, I would think you could, you could do informal, still, you know, volunteers. And again, just, just a thought, I'll, I'll come back to that, though, Andrew, I apologize. I kind of jumped in front of you here, so I'll wait till my turn at the end, but go ahead, Andrew.
Oh, thank you, Lisa. I don't, so we're speaking now to the revisions to the Trails Committee charge. It made a lot of sense to me. I, I mean, one of the first things that I, it, it made sense to me. So, you know, I'd be interested to hear, Lisa, what you're, we're thinking there about the downsides of having the associate non-voting members, because none were really coming to mind to me. I mean, the one immediate thing it made me, it kind of reminded me of how I mean, the one immediate thing it made me, it kind of reminded me of how is how, you know, the ZBA has alternate members. That's something completely different because they really are, they come and sub in when people need to recuse themselves for things like that. But um there's very good reasons to keep the committee size at five rather than seven. And there's also good reasons to try to have a structure to to encourage someone like Mr. um Shoner, who was before us, instead of saying, okay, well, come back at some unspecified time later. So that's why, you know, I read the memo and it made sense to me.
Great, thank you, Andrew. Ms. Malinowski?
Thank you. Um, so I also thought about the ZBA Committee as well. And I view that differently because it's a permitting board. And there are um, you know, conflicts that come up where you would actually need an alternate, alternate to fill in. So I actually view it as a, almost a necessity on a permitting board like ZBA versus Trails, um where you're trying to incorporate more volunteers who have a passion about um, you know, building trails in our community and um making, you know, doing more connectivity. Um I hesitate to make a change like this to this particular charge um to fit people that we have before us. I think um, you know, we, we need to make decisions for the long-term future and not, you know, the current makeup of a committee or particular people who are interested and we, and we just don't have room right now. Um I certainly appreciate that we have interest in, in Trails. I think the candidate that we had um earlier this evening obviously has a passion and um is very well qualified to serve on Trails. Um I am in favor of making this a permanent committee. Um and, you know, moving away from the ad hoc and bringing that to town meeting. I think that makes a lot of sense, especially since we've had this for several years now. Um I guess those are my initial thoughts. I mean, I guess I wasn't done. So um open meeting law and, you know, deliberating outside of, of a meeting, like do they count towards a quorum? Don't they count towards a quorum? I think you're just opening yourselves up to potential issues with open meeting law. So I, you know, I, I have a lot of hesitation um to, to do this, um Catherine. And, you know, it's, it's nothing against Trails, it's more, you know, from a precedent setting for how we're handling volunteers in town. And, you know, I, I do think that we still have the opportunity to take public input as boards and committees and um, you know, have people as residents help um with those. So those are kind of my initial thoughts. Thank you.
Mr. Haley?
Um, yeah, the easy question first. Uh, uh, I'm actually surprised that you're not a permanent committee. So shame on me for not knowing that, but clearly you should be. Uh, you know, just the range of, of things that you've accomplished already and, and and the uh, the various things that are on your plate and are about to be on your plate. I mean, it makes perfect sense for, um, uh, and I can't imagine that the town wouldn't support that from a uh, from a town meeting standpoint. The associate thing is an interesting question. And, and Lisa, maybe, maybe you and Mark have already touched base with Jay Tallerman. Because I think, I think Chelsea's right. I mean, I think there would be some navigation that would be necessary here about um open meetings and participation in meetings um and alike. By the same token, I think they, they are things that can be navigated. And, and Catherine, I, I guess I'll put this question to you. Is the main reason that you want to, to have, have a designation for, for a couple of additional individuals to potentially be associate members, or whatever the term is, of uh, of the Trails Committee, is that the, that um it would be some additional manpower that the Trails Committee could use for projects? And it would give them the, you know, um, uh, umbrella protection of being a, what, again, even though it's an associate designation, of being an appointed member of a town committee. Uh or if that's something nobody's thought about yet, which is, which is also a possibility, it just struck me. So I guess those are my thoughts. And, and Catherine, I guess Mark or Lisa on the legal side of things? And Catherine on, is that the primary um catalyst for seeking to do this? Thanks.
Do you have a preference of who goes first?
So let me, let me go to Mr. Purple first for the legal question.
Yep.
Uh, again, I don't give legal advice, I'm just the middle man. Um but I, I think Catherine did noted in her memo um that, that Jay Tallerman has kind of weighed on this. And um I, I think he had some of the same concerns in terms of making an associate member. He thought it was just cleaner, you know, since it is an ad hoc committee appointed by the selectmen, simply to add members to it. Um and, and really that was his only comment in terms of the associate members. Um he didn't really have a comment on whether, you know, it was a, remained an ad hoc committee or if it was a um bylaw committee, he, he deferred that to, to the wisdom of the selectmen.
All right, thank you. Um, so I, I guess, Sam, if you will indulge me, I'm, I'm gonna jump in here because I think some of my concerns tie into the conversations that are happening. So the concerns I had, I, I, again, I am hundred percent in favor of, again, I was surprised as well that this wasn't a standing committee. So um I have more so process concerns with the associate member. Um I look at this as a whole to all the other boards and committees that we have in town as well. So if we have members of a committee, but yet they're ex officio, I guess, in a way, but it doesn't quite meet the qualifications of an ex officio. So you have members on the committee that participate in meetings, they don't count towards quorums. I was thinking ahead to some of the other boards and committees we have. And um the guardrails that would need to be put in place, because a lot of the boards and committees we have may or may not have full members. If you start adding associate members, what happens when an executive session may or may, may or may not take place? We're now opening the door to, again, without specific guardrails being put in place. Um I think of, um, I'm gonna use our dear friend, Mr. Lit, because Tim, Tim seems to attend an awful lot of meetings, but he's not a member. And if each of those boards and committees could make Tim an associate member if they wanted as well. And Mr. Lit, I apologize for, for calling you out, but you do attend an awful lot of, of meetings and you're, you're an active participant, which is appreciated. Um, so I just worry about what, what the guardrails will be. I, I would be more in favor of, of increasing, but I understand the concerns that, that Catherine has. Um, I just don't know where, again, the guardrails may be put in place that, again, another board or committee coming forward, well, it may be fine for, for Trails. How do you say no to whether it be maybe another permitting board? Or, you know, um, what a health, MTC, if we start adding associate members? Um I just have a concern there. So um that kind of ties in, I'll think a little bit with, with some of the open meeting law and whatnot concerns that, that Chelsea had as well. So Catherine, I don't know if you want to say anything to that, or I can.
Oh yeah, I was just waiting for permission to speak. I'm ready. Okay, so um, yeah, thank you for sharing all of those concerns. I think they're very valid and I think, um, I think they can be dealt with. So I was wondering if you would be concerned about the precedent setting as well? Um and I'm not exactly sure how to answer all of those questions. But what I do know is that this system has been worked out by other towns. So hopefully, um and, and this, I'll go ahead and break out a surprise, but, or a request and a, and an offer to maybe help um form this out a little bit. But what I noticed when I was doing a little bit of research is that a lot of other towns have a committee handbook. Um and so that handbook actually outlines the process. And I'm sure it's given to a lot of new committee members, so they know what's going on. I believe that Lisa and Chelsea, once upon a time, had thought that the, that you guys wanted to create maybe an orientation packet or something for boards and committees. And that sounds like a really great ad hoc committee. Um and I'd be willing to volunteer for that after the master plan gets its plan done, um to help form that handbook that would then help structure this process so that all of those questions would be answered. Because I think you bring up a really good point, and I tried to touch on it a tiny bit in the memo, is that, you know, the open meeting law has to be followed, the conflict of interest has to be followed. They have to be treated like a volunteer so that all of those belts and suspenders and processes are, are followed properly and that you're not breaking um, breaking the law or creating loopholes for scandals to happen. Like, God forbid, we go and create trails without permissions, I'm just joking about that. But, you know, I think there's other boards and commissions that this may open cans of worms for that I'm not thinking about, right? So I'm gonna have to rely on your expertise to kind of work through that. So I certainly understand that. Um, one of the reasons, back to Marty's question about manpower and umbrella protection, um more of the, the reason I would, I thought about this non-associate position was because we were having trouble meeting quorum. And I thought, we have such a great um, we have great resources on our committee. But if there's somebody that can't be always at a meeting, but they have wonderful things to contribute, how do we leverage that? And so that's what this idea, that's how it came about. I was like, I really want to leverage this person's skills, but they can't attend all the meetings. How do we, how do we get a win-win out of that? And so that's, that's where it came from. Um I like the idea, what Marty is saying, that if they are an official volunteer, that they would be included under the umbrella of, you know, protection of liability, whatever that may be. Um but something I brought up to Lisa and Mark is, I would like that volunteer, the non-associate, uh, non-voting associate to have some pride in being a volunteer on the committee and be listed on the website, for example. And to have that, you know, that option to, uh, not everyone cares about their name being on a website, but I just think it's a perk. Um and it would be a benefit to that. And to the point that we might want to open it up to more, I, I like that idea. I mean, maybe two is too little and we want to do three. And then we can open it up to the town and whoever else wants to come forward, like Diana Bell in the comment section, who wants to volunteer, um could do so, you know. So I would hope that there's a way, and I would be willing to put a lot of time into helping work through those details. I know it's not easy um to, to think of everything that possibly this could, could open up. But I'm hopeful that there's, um, there's a way to, you know, to incorporate the ideas that we've kind of put forward.
Great, Catherine, and I'm just gonna address the, the handbook. So we, we did talk about a handbook, and actually, Mr. Stivers and I, I believe, are, are the two that are on the list. But we are waiting for Ms. Malinowski and I are working through all of the policies and updating policies. Uh, it's, it's a pretty, pretty heavy lift, but we, we are working on it. Unfortunately, summer has come and life has come. So uh, we've already talked about getting back on track with that. And I think once the policies are done, then the handbook, um, you know, can certainly be uh worked on and created from there. So, um, Mr. Stivers?
Thanks. Um, a couple of things. One, um, thanks, Cat, good presentation and some good ideas here. I certainly agree with the sentiment that this committee ought to be a standing committee. And it's a, an oversight over several years now that it hasn't already been done so. So I fully support that. Um, I also like the idea of the associate members. Um, I, I actually looked around, there are a lot of towns who do this. And I also follow the open meeting law violations at the Secretary of State's office. I can't ever recall find, seeing a violation from somebody who is an associate member. I don't claim to have seen everything, but it seems to me that associate members are sort of like the public, sitting in on meetings. And as you said, Mr. Lit sits on, in a lot of meetings, I sit in a lot of meetings. And uh, you know, non-voting, non-quorum, seems to me that's a, a, not an unreasonable position. Particularly it, it connects them more closely and maybe provides more motivation for people to participate that way. Um, I don't worry about precedent so much and that we control precedent to a large degree. So if we say this doesn't set precedent, or we'll look at each case on its own merits, which I think we should do, then it wouldn't bother me to have, you know, another committee or two committees have associate members out there potentially. Also, one of the big advantages I see from this is it sort of provides a, I don't know, bench strength, if you will, for new members. So if somebody leaves the committee and you have somebody who's an associate for a year or two, who really sort of gets in and understands what the committee does and, and is ready to step in quickly. You've got a trained individual or two individuals there who can provide seamless transition to fill spots without having to go through our usual process of advertising and beating the bushes to find good volunteers, et cetera. And so you do that, in fact, to refill an associate position, but you've got sort of a, again, ongoing stream of, of qualified, dedicated people to keep the work going smoothly. So I think that's a huge advantage from this kind of thing. So I'm, I'm strongly supportive of the associate members and hope we can figure out a way to do it. That's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Andrew, did you want us to come back to you?
Uh, yes, thank you. I, I mean, just listening to the discussion, I realized I didn't really complete the thought, which I offered about the ZBA at the, at the outset, which is really goes to, to Sam's point, is that, you know, I began um as an alternate member on the ZBA. And I found it was, there was definitely a difference between being a, a member and being, you know, part of the commitment was you're supposed to attend all the meetings, even if you're not gonna vote on things. And it gets you more into the committee. Um, it's, it is different than just saying, well, we appreciate your interest and please show up to our meetings. Um and I tend to agree with Sam that it's pretty, and I understand the concerns have been uh, a, addressed, but I think it's pretty something that's kind of low risk.
Okay, we'll go back. Ms. Malinowski, anything further?
No, I, I guess I would ask Cat, um, what is the number one reason to, to do this? I, I guess I don't see participating as a, as a, as the public versus as an alternate or um, sorry, I forget the term they use. Um, any, I don't see the difference um other than I think it, I just think it opens us up to, I guess Andrew thinks it's all a risk, I think it's higher than low risk.
Yes, good question. I think, um, I don't know if I had to pick one reason. You know, I've, I've served on the committee for four years, almost five in the spring. And you, it's a small group. And I think I'm a big proponent of inclusiveness. And I think sure, members can attend. Um but be adding a, a non-voting associate position adds more of an inclusive feel for that position. And there's a little bit more incentive to be involved in that way. And there's a little bit more, um, it's, it, it, it could be more incentive to continue to attend and participate rather than just be a member of the public who shows up at a, at a meeting. To be, to belong to a group um means something. And I think we've all heard that there's nothing stronger than the heart of a volunteer. And this really helps tap into that and brings that person into the group. And um hopefully they would feel proud about their contributions and uh belonging to this, you know, committee.
Back to you, Mr. Haley. Any further closing thoughts?
Um, I guess a lot of people made some very good points here on, on both sides of the question. Um, I'm, I'm kinda on the fence. Um, I'm intrigued at the uh, the idea that a number of other communities have done this. I guess, Catherine, do you have, um, have you done already? Or could you um, um, you know, put together just a list of the towns that have done it? And, and how they've used those associate members? I, I'd be, I'd be curious to know that. Um and also, I think, I think the point that Lisa and Chelsea make about, about the open meetings law is a, is a good one. That's why I brought up Mr. Tallerman. It, it just strikes me as, as if there are otherwise are good reasons to do this, um, I suspect that there are ways to protect ourselves um uh against open meeting issues. I think we've done a pretty good job of that, at least at the VOS level in the last um couple of years, as have most of the other um boards and committees in town. Um, and that, that clearly was one of the things that Mr. Tallerman um highlighted during the um, during the hiring process that we went through for him. So i- if there are logistical um uh navigation that can be done to, to, to get this done. And if in these other towns, there is, there's real value that's being added because of this, that, that would, that would be important for me to know.
Great.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I'm happy to um do a little bit more digging on that. So I did some light research around this and included a couple of hyperlinks to Westboro and Foxborough's uh committee handbooks that highlight those uh non-voting associate positions. But what I'll do is I'll, I'll find a few more towns, but I'll reach out to a, a couple towns and ask them if they have any challenges or issues that would be um good to know or benefits, you know, just to kind of get a sense um of, of what that experience has been for those towns, so that I can bring that back to the board and you can make a more informed decision on that. And I'll be objective, I won't skew the information to my advantage.
And we'll be objective in considering it.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Catherine.
I'll, I'll do the skewing, you just do the data.
All right, yeah. Catherine, thank you. And, and I just, I just want to say too, I'm, I'm not against the idea. I'm just trying to, process-wise, process-wise, figure out how we could do it and still, um, be protective of, of open meeting law. And, um, I mean, I think back to when I first got involved in the town. I wanted to be on the Open Space Commission and um, there was concern about having two members living too close. So for a year I attended meetings. You know, I, I still wanted to be a part of it. And I think you're going to get that with, you know, um, as you've seen a comment come up tonight with somebody that, that, that's interested. I understand the inclusive piece as well. It's just trying to, to see if there's a logistical way that we can do this. So why don't we put you back on the agenda? Um, or I'm just trying to think of what we have on the 21st already. Um, why don't we tentatively say Catherine, and, and we'll get back to you this week on this, whether it's the 21st or the first meeting in October. How's that? And then, yeah, we can get some information together and, and, um, you know, and have a, a little broader discussion on it then. But I think, I think that the board is, is clearly in favor of, you know, making you guys a, a permanent committee, I think.
That's wonderful.
I think, yeah, the, the sentiments are all there for that. So, and I believe that has to be a Board of Selectment sponsored um, article. And I, somehow I don't think you're going to have too much trouble with this board and getting that done.
And I'm, I'm happy to, I'm still new to all of this, but I'm happy to put on all the effort needed to make it as light work for you guys as possible because I know you have a lot going on. So whatever you need from the committee to help advance that, I'm happy to. I do have a draft from someone very useful that you've already mentioned that has helped us create something. So that might help advance the, uh, the ball a little bit too. And, uh, I will send the information. It won't be this week, but, um, next week I'll send that to, should that go to Mark and Lisa or, okay.
So I'll say that one. All right. You can just forward it to Mr. Purple and he will forward it to the board.
All right. Great. Well, thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Kathy, thank you for coming and thank you for everything that you guys do. I mean, as Marty said, you are probably one of the busiest committees that we have. And, um, you know, probably again, one of the committees that your trails are so extremely used. So again, uh, share our thanks with everybody. And again, thank you for coming tonight.
Will do. Thank you guys again.
Awesome. Thank you so much. All right. Jennifer Thompson, CCS update on ARPA consulting services. Chelsea, I know as the board rep, we're, it was this, am I tossing this over to you for the introduction?
Um, um, sure. So, um, we had signed off on a contract with CCS at our last, second-to-last meeting, I believe. Um, and I know that um, the finance team has had a chance to meet with Jennifer from CCS. Um, and just a reminder that, um, we're contracting with CCS to, um, review federal and state funds related to, um, COVID um, funding, um, which would include ARPA is the big one, um, and also anything CARES related. So, um, Jennifer, I'm going to kick it over to you, um, if you want to give a brief introduction. Um, I know we haven't had a chance to meet, but, um, I think you had a chance to meet some of the town staff.
Thank you very much. It, it's nice to meet you all, um, virtually unfortunately, but hopefully someday soon we'll be in person. Um, so I did have the benefit of watching the meeting live, uh, when you discussed the contract. So, um, which was helpful for me because it, it did give me some insight in what the board was looking for. Um, and you mentioned that you wanted to have a meeting, a meet and greet, uh, tonight, not any sort of a dog and pony show or a presentation. And I know you have a full agenda, so I'll be brief, um, just more of an introduction of who we are and what we can provide and, um, and answer any questions that you might have. So just very briefly, because I know you've already looked at the background of the company. So CSS is a small woman-owned business. Um, a small local company out of Marlboro. And we're made up exclusively of former municipal employees. So we've all worked in the municipal sector. Um, and the main purpose of the company is to help municipalities with special projects and projects that, um, come, you know, outside the scope or are in addition to some of the duties and responsibilities that, uh, towns and cities are tasked with. So, uh, those of you, I, I, I know many of you had looked at the website. You saw that CSS does a lot of community outreach. Um, they do a lot of social media and help towns with the website work. Um, primarily, uh, for the last few years, CSS has done a lot of work in terms of helping towns reach out to residents, especially when they're having construction or infrastructure work done, um, or any sort of major projects done in the town or city. They'll come in and they'll assist the town with communicating with residents and helping to mitigate some of those communications and getting in front of them, being proactive and, um, helping folks, especially when it's a large impact project. Um, where I come into play is my background is a little bit different than those folks. So those folks are very good on the uh, communications and, um, creative part. And, and, and I can do that too, but that's not really my forte. I'm more of a finance person and an administrative person and have spent the last 24 years in municipal government. I joined CSS this year, um, exclusively for work having to do with grants management and ARPA and CARES funding and COVID-related work. So my background, I think most of you received copies of it, um, at your last meeting, but again, I've, um, spent my whole career in municipal government. I have been a town manager for the last six years. Before that, and in a small community, um, a little bit smaller than South Borough, but similar uh, in terms of size. Prior to that, I was an assistant town manager in a very large municipality, um, which is right next door to Framingham, which is now a city, as you know. Um, and, and spent about 16 years there as well before I was the assistant town manager. So I, I, um, had a lot of administrative and finance roles. Um, and then for a brief time, I was also the chief financial officer for the Bonneville County Sheriff's Office, um, which was very good for me because it gave me a lot of, um, state and, and, um, exposure up at the State House and, and those kinds of contacts that are sometimes very helpful when it comes to state and federal funding. So that was a wonderful experience for me. I went back to Framingham to manage their ARRA funding. So, um, ARRA and ARPA, and I know we like to use a lot of, um, abbreviations when it comes to this stuff, but as you recall, ARRA funding for Framingham, it was a $250 million in ARRA money that they received. And much like some of this ARPA money, they didn't have the, the staff, existing staff to manage that additional $250 million of, you know, financial procurement and administrative work that goes along with it. So, um, I was hired to, to do that work and managed it for several years. And Nicole was one of the founding partners of CSS, uh, worked there at the time as well. And she handled all the public outreach, um, having to do with those, those projects. So our experience is managing federal and state money, um, helping to mitigate impacts when they come up and when you are planning projects. Um, my background is heavy in finance, uh, procurement, administration, strategic planning, and obviously assisting boards, which is something that I've done for several years, um, with pathways and, and helping to make decisions. So that's something we hope to provide to South Borough. Um, it's what we tried to highlight in our proposal. Um, just a few things, if you want, I can talk about the, the plan and scope of work. Does, does that sound good? So I, I know you saw it in writing and then you, you spoke about it briefly at your last meeting, but the services that we can offer, and again, this is, um, an at-will contract. It's, um, and not to exceed amount. So you can use us as, as little or as much as you would like or need, um, which is nice for something like the ARPA funding because it's new to all of us, really. I mean, it's similar to some of the ARRA funding and it's similar to the CARES funding and the FEMA funding, but, um, you know, who knows what's going to happen with other stimulus bills and other funding that might come down. So we're here for you and, um, can provide whatever assistance you might need. So some of that, um, when I met with Mr. Purple and Mr. Valentine, your, um, finance director, involves that kind of strategic planning and the decisions that the board would like to make and the town would like to make as a whole in terms of what projects you'd like to move forward with. And I think, um, you know, you discussed this at your last meeting and, and the board members made some really good points in that CSS can provide you with some technical assistance and can provide you with some outreach and, um, with your residents and also setting up working groups and providing any sort of technical assistance in terms of what projects would be eligible and what projects might give you the best bang for your buck, so to speak. But ultimately it is going to be your decision as the policymakers of the town in terms of what projects you'd like to go forward with. We're just here to help and guide you wherever you might need. The second piece is the funding piece. So I've already started working with, um, Carla a little bit, um, just on your CARES funding. We had, um, submission five, which was due Friday, um, which she's done a wonderful job. I, I know you all appreciate the amount of work that town accountants and finance directors and town managers have had to take on this last year with this funding, um, especially with the CARES Act and the FEMA funding because it's shifted and changed so much. Um, and I've already had a chance to kind of look at a lot of the work that Carla has done this past week. And she's done a tremendous job managing that. Um, and it's, it's can be very complicated just because of how everything rolled out. So I think we talked about, um, creating a funding portfolio, which would show all of your different funding mechanisms that relate to the COVID-19 pandemic, including CARES and, um, FEMA and the ARPA funding. And I think, uh, select board member Healy had mentioned, you know, the possibility of maybe a monthly report, kind of a high-level report that will just show you where we are in terms of, um, all the different funding streams and something that you can look at. So that's kind of the second piece that we can provide. Certainly any sort of financial administrative or procurement assistance you might need down the road. If you start to look at the projects and there's a gap that we can fill, we're here to provide that as well. And I think the fourth real big category that we can help with is just making sure you're in compliance with all the, um, state and federal funding requiring, reporting requirements and, um, and all the requirements that have to be in place when you do face, um, your regular audit and then perhaps a federal audit, which is, um, can be quite time-consuming. I've, I've had to live through them. So, um, they come and they sometimes don't come for a few years after the fact. So we can help you just make sure that everything is right where it needs to be so that you'll be ready in case that does come along. And I think the only thing I would add is, um, we had submitted a proposal and I know you had talked about the contract at your last meeting. So after that meeting, um, we received the, um, we had said, you know, we can go with the town contract. I know you wanted town council to look at it. So, um, that was just a proposal that we had given you. We ended up signing the town contract that was prepared by your town council with the additions that you had mentioned, which was, um, making sure that it stated that it was an at-will contract and also the, um, hourly rate was included. And, um, as I said, and as you mentioned in your meeting, Carla has been kind of the day-to-day, um, in terms of where our assignments will come from and then we'll continue to work with, um, Mr. Purple and Mr. Valentine on the, uh, kind of larger strategic planning on behalf of the board. I think that's it, but I'm here to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. It's very nice to meet you, by the way. Carla, while you, while you're here, again, we appreciate everything you've done. Is there anything that you would like to add to, uh, what Jennifer has said?
Um, no, I, I think she's covered it. Um, you know, we've had a few meetings and, but, you know, she's gone through and requested a few more reports here and there. And so far, so good is all I have to say.
Awesome. And Mr. Purple, I'll come to you next before we open it up to the board. If there's any further, anything further you would like to add as well?
No, I, I, I really appreciate Jennifer being here tonight and introducing herself to the board. And, you know, I had absolutely no doubt she was going to present very well. Um, she, she, um, she really, um, you know, has a, has a great face for local government and has for many years. I've had the pleasure of knowing her a couple of different capacities over the course of my career. Um, and, uh, you know, I know that, uh, she's just started working with Carla, but Carla already seems happier and more accessible to the other things that we need her to do. So, um, I think Jennifer is hitting all the right buttons at this point. And, uh, um, you know, as the, um, uh, the, I don't want to say directions, instructions, guidance, I guess for ARPA becomes a little more clear and a little more, um, uh, um, you know, we, we get, you know, we get some, we get some additional guidance. Then we can begin, you know, hopefully to, to try to, um, hone some of the things that we've talked about doing for projects and everything and use Jennifer's expertise to try to give the board some guidance as to, again, what's the best bang for the buck? What are the things that really are hitting the things that ARPA is looking to fund? And, um, you know, do we want to take a big swing like Mr. Dennington has suggested? You know, or do we want to try to, you know, to hit a number of, 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 uh, smaller projects and, and do a broad brush of these things? So, um, work in progress, but I appreciate Jennifer's presentation.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Purple. Ms. Malinowski.
Thank you. And thank you, Jennifer, for that overview. Um, in terms of the strategic plan and, um, path forward, do you have um, suggestions on how we would, um, do outreach to department heads for, um, things that they're looking for versus boards and committees versus, you know, um, residents at large? Um, and then how would, and ideas on how to prioritize? Um, if, if that's, if that's a process that you recommend, then how you would prioritize?
Sure. So I think, you know, some of that is going to be, um, steered by Mr. Purple in terms of how much interaction he wants me to have with the department heads. But my thought is, um, we're waiting for that second guidance to come out. We were hoping for September 1st, but I keep checking, uh, waiting for them to show us, uh, just because I think it'll give us a little more guidance in terms of, you know, the, the specificity on the projects that, um, will be eligible. But once that comes out, which I expect, you know, either this week or next, um, I would anticipate that, um, Mr. Purple and, and Brian and I will meet and Carla and talk about the next steps in terms of whether we're, whether or not we would then reach out and start meeting with department heads and getting their feedback. I did notice that, um, you've had some submittals already from department heads with some suggested projects. So we can kind of compile those and put them in a more kind of comprehensive look. And then, um, I think a follow-up conversation with the board would be, um, how far out do you want us to reach? You know, do you want to form a working group? Um, to work specifically on this with members, you know, members of the community and, you know, perhaps a member of the board or two members of the board. Um, so those are just some thoughts and ideas that I've had. And then, um, once we get to that, that point where we start to either form a working group or have a, a small group to kind of focus on this, um, what kind of criteria do you want to assign to the projects, which I think would be a good way to do it. Not necessarily a scoring, but something similar. So you can kind of weigh out the different options that you have and what benefits you get from them. And which ones are, you know, really geared toward the ARPA funding and, and are going to give you that kind of biggest bang for your buck. So I think that we'll develop kind of a scoring system and then an analysis system for the board to look at and say, you know, these are the 10 or the 15 projects. And, you know, this is kind of how we would recommend you look at them. And then just give you the information that you need to make an informed decision. Um, but I think having that input from members of the community is going to be very important. So, um, you know, if the board supports it and Mr. Purple thinks it's a good idea, I think perhaps forming a working group for that piece of it would be, um, beneficial.
Great. Thank you. That's all I have. Mr. Haley.
Hi Jennifer, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
Um, I'm not going to ask you any questions. I'm just going to get a couple of comments. Number one, you know, I had not focused on the compliance part of things. Um, and I'm glad you did because I think that's incredibly important. Um, uh, second, um, uh, the idea of, of, I'm, I'm happy to see that you, um, are embracing the idea of a, of a report. Um, because so much of this is just, um, I mean, so much of the guidance is counterintuitive in terms of, of what can and can't be spent from these particular, uh, things. So I, I think having a report, um, knowing what you're doing, um, whether it's through a working group or otherwise. And I, I, I think you're right that, 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 that ultimately that'll be Mark's, um, call and whether or not that makes a whole lot of sense. Um, and I guess the other thing is, and, and I'll, I'll steal some of Mr. uh, Stivers' thunder, um, that I, I, I think I certainly am. I know he is. Um, uh, outside of the box is not only okay, it's welcome in terms of, of ways that we might attack these, these funding sources and, and make use of them. So again, welcome. Uh, pleasure me too. And, and like you said, I look forward to meeting you in person.
Thank you. You as well.
Mr. Stivers.
Thank you. Uh, great to meet you, Jennifer, virtually at least here. And
Yes.
The, uh, the issue for me is that, uh, I think this opportunity is huge and the amount of work is huge. And, um, I would observe that, uh, Mr. Purple, Mr. Valentine, Ms. McAuliffe all have full-time jobs before this came along. So I think it's, it's extremely important to get the kind of resource that you and your colleagues provide for us to be able to take advantage of this. Um, and I, uh, again, uh, had some of the same questions that, uh, Chelsea raised. I'll comment to Mr. Healy. I'm now in my elder years and so I think I'm back in the box again, but I, I like, I like Mr. Dennington's big swing concept. Um, and Jennifer, I know you may have heard some of our comments, uh, at earlier meeting. Uh, one of the things that I was interested in was finding help that, uh, was not only connected, uh, in terms of, uh, local engagement, but well- but well-connected at state levels and federal levels. And you've touched on that a little bit. You commented on state. Are you folks connected with the federal government in places that are going to actually have some more of the ARPA money directly allocated to them? I see this as a three-layer process. One, direct to town. Second, to the state. And it's great if we're in position to get a reasonable share of that money as well as federal agency money. So I think that it's important to consider all three levels at once. And I don't want to put you on the spot on that, but that's again, a question that, that I will have going forward. Another issue that I would keep on the radar screen is looking at what other towns are doing. I've been watching the public press about announcements for where people are spending ARPA money. Worcester has come up with some interesting things, I think, that are, are beyond the pale of what we have been talking about. Now, whether that's quotes legal or not, I have no idea. But one of the things that it reminded me of, I attended a National League of Cities workshop a couple of months ago, where they advertised they're building a database of projects that cities and towns across the country are using ARPA money for. So I think keeping an eye on that kind of thing could be very interesting as far as sort of seeing what's out there. And I think, I, I, I'm not a fan. I've been sort of working around the federal government for a number of decades. And the expectation that they're going to come up with a ironclad set of rules that everybody can follow directly and be totally immune from any audit risk, et cetera, et cetera, is a fantasy, I think. So I think we need to be creative and reasonably aggressive, but certainly well within the boundaries of any legal requirements. And I think we'll get some of those ideas from looking externally to see what people are doing with it. So, so again, I, per Chelsea's comment, I think it's very important to sort of lay out the process. How are we going to do this and place a foundational understanding here? For example, I'm still not clear whether in fact the ARPA money is something that the Board of Selectmen can send to different places or whether it's got to go through town meeting and the budget process. I don't, I don't know if there's, there's a clear answer to that or not, but things like that, I think, are important for us to understand as we sort of march down this path. So, so again, welcome aboard. I think it's a huge task, huge opportunity and look forward to working together on this.
Thank you.
Mr. Dennington.
Thank you very much. I mean, this, this discussion is just getting me excited about the whole process. I'm looking forward to working with you. And on the topic of, you know, what type of ARPA projects are within the, the guidelines, I think my, my big pic, big picture view of it was, you know, the guidelines do prioritize projects which have some connection to public health, but it's not necessarily public health and the kind of the infectious disease. Then it can also encompass things that have an environmental, public health component to them. And that I do think that there are some needs and opportunities the town has for, for infrastructure projects that have a relationship with public health, climate change. And the real opportunity is also to do something that uses ARPA money, helps fiscal stability so that we, we can, we can use this money rather than having to, taxpayer, residential tax income. I see my battery, I'm getting a warning, my battery is running low. So move me. Stop talking and try to plug in my computer.
No problem.
All right. Again, Jennifer, thank you so much for everything. It's, I, I am glad to see that you think that Carla is as much of a gem as we do and, and appreciate all of the hard work that she has put in, you know, through this last year over and above. You know, when she came back to Southborough, I don't know that she anticipated COVID, obviously, and, and what it was going to entail. So I thank you for recognizing her for the hard work that she's done. It's unfortunate that the September 1st guidance isn't out yet. I was kind of hoping to have a little bit of discussion about that, but next time, I guess. And I think outreach, as Ms. Malinowski said, is, is something that's so very important, especially in a community as small as Southborough, you know, to, to allow voices to be heard. So with that, I thank you for coming. I look forward to future conversations with you. I'm sure that there will be many. And with that, if any other member of the board has anything else to add, if not, we will bid adieu to Jennifer for the night. And, and again, we look forward to talking to you again soon.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Awesome. Carla, thank you for coming and have a great night. All right. All right. That being said, Chairman's Report. So I am just going to give a, a brief update. I know Mr. Stivers is aware of some of the concerns that have taken place down at, at the swap shop. So I'm just going to touch on this briefly. I, I did have the opportunity to speak to Linda David today. It was a very positive, very great conversation. So for some members of the board that not, may not be aware, Marty, I know that you're not here as well. There was a complaint that had came in to the DPW superintendent regarding some work that some volunteers were doing. I will preface it by saying they were doing some amazing work down at the swap shop. They had organized everything. They, it was all coordinated in a volunteer effort. So much kudos to them. Unfortunately, Ms. Gallagher wasn't aware that that was taking place down there. So she had some concerns, some concerns being operational, that she wasn't aware that it was happening, but other members of the DPW were. She was addressing that. She had some concerns with liability and legal. And she's trying to get through these so that we can have a conversation and look at potentially forming some type of official volunteer group. You know, to continue the good efforts that this group was doing. I know, as I said, I spoke to Ms. David today. It was a great conversation and I foresee her being part of the solution on how we move forward and the guardrails that we need to put in place. So that's just an update to the board that that is, that whole situation is moving forward in, in a positive way. Ms. Gallagher is, is being very helpful in moving that forward as well. Next is an update on the downtown district. So we had our first meeting on the design guidelines with a member of historical planning board, myself, EDC, and Sarah Hoker as well. Judy Barrett participated in the first meeting. We all had a little bit of homework. We were all going to try to meet on Friday. And then unfortunately, with schedules and the holiday weekend, it didn't, it didn't happen. So we're looking to meet again, go over some of the edits that we have based on the homework that all of us had on the different sections. And the goal is to meet again this week with or without Judy. Judy was available if we wanted to meet with her. So that is moving forward. I don't think there's any other updates since we last talked, other than planning board is, is still working on a solution to the, to the map issue that we have, but I think we're on the right path with that as well. The goal is to hopefully, you know, start actually delving into the document itself versus the map because that seemed to be what most of the discussion was. So at the next planning board meeting, hopefully we'll be able to get into some of the specifics of the bylaw itself as we continue moving with that. Lastly, office hours. So we're going to start those back up for the month of September. It will be via Zoom, obviously. You know, based on COVID. So for September, I have Ms. Malinowski and I. In October, whether it's in person or via Zoom, I have Mr. Healy and Mr. Stivers. And we'll, we'll shoot dates out to see when you guys are available as well. November, I have Mr. Dennington and Ms. Malinowski. And then that takes us to December and I have Mr. Healy, myself, and I have Sam and Andrew in January. So that puts us through the next one, two, three, four, the next five months anyway. So we can get back to office hours and, you know, with this, the cool months coming, allowing the public's voice to be heard. So that's all I have for Chairman's Report. Members' Report, Summer Nights, that was Ms. Malinowski?
It was. So I just wanted to acknowledge that Summer Nights happened this year after a little New Year hiatus due to local health concerns. And it was great. The fireworks were great. So I just wanted to thank Tim Davis in the Rec Department, the Recreation Commission, the Friends of Recreation, Fire Police, the Health Department and all of the sponsors that made the night successful. I know it was pared back a little bit based on just current COVID concerns, but I thought it was great. I got a lot of great feedback from families who were happy to attend a town event. So thank you to all those involved.
Wonderful. Did anyone have anything else to add? I don't, I'm assuming not.
Summer Nights, I'll, I'll weigh in too, Chelsea. Good report. It was, again, great to get it restarted. I'm always amazed at the energy that the kids produce running around there at high speed for two hours non-stop. It's very exciting. And the, the drizzle that occurred was actually beneficial. It turned out the band was concerned about setting up their instruments on the bandstand. So they wound up moving around in the crowd, setting up at various places in the crowd and putting on a little performance in lots of places around the general yard area there, which was great because people were actually dancing and the kids were loving it. So again, much more personal and direct than a more formal kind of musical event. So I think that worked out even better as a matter of fact. So great to see everybody having fun and look forward to doing it again next year. Thanks.
Awesome. Sam, how were the food trucks?
I sampled many of them and they were very popular. So, and I, I had to eat ice cream for all the rest of you, but it was great though. And setup, I hope the rotary thing sounds like it's going to be on for food trucks as well. Which again, another great event coming up here pretty soon.
Yeah, I believe next Wednesday is, actually it was a great tie-in. I believe next Wednesday is their, the first food truck event, the St. Mark's one. So, great. Thank you both very much for that. Mr. Purple.
Thank you, madam. Excuse me, madam. Chairmembers of the board. A couple of notes just for you. The first is the, what has now become the annual ALS fundraiser at Southborough Golf Club. Been in conversation with the management company. And they wanted to make sure that they, that we were doing this again, and we are on Columbus Day weekend. You know, we, we do this and, and make a donation to ALS One, you know, in memory of, of John Wilson and also a former selectman, Brian Schiffern. The management company, you know, hopes for three good days of, of, of sun and golf weather. You know, they did have a little bit of rain last year, but essentially people will go, they pay the fee. And the golf company makes a, a donation of a portion of that fee to ALS One. And Brian Shea has, had been the person who had been coordinating with ALS One on behalf of the town to try to, you know, get, to, to get whatever materials and paraphernalia and, you know, information for advertising to the clubhouse and for the town. Said he would be happy to continue doing that again on behalf of the town. And so he'll be coordinating that. And again, that's Columbus Day weekend for the Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So fingers crossed for good weather so that we can make a, a nice donation this year. Just a reminder, I know the Chief Achilles has sent out information to the board for the, the 9/11 ceremony that'll be held this coming Saturday beginning at 9:55 a.m. For those of you who haven't had the pleasure of attending, I will tell you it is the one thing that I will block out on my calendar every year. The ceremony is, is very, I would say, brief. It begins at 9:55. It only lasts for about 20, 25 minutes. I find it very meaningful, you know, and very, very respectful every year in that. So if you do have an opportunity to attend, I would invite you to. Some years, it's simply been three or four police officers, the duty fire crew, the, the chaplain and Mrs. Hale and I. But there have been more people coming out in past years. So it's been great to see more people. And again, it's, it is a Saturday morning. It's not a lot of time. So I invite you to come. And I know it's been pretty well-publicized this year. The final item that I have, and I had sent this out to the board. This is regarding the, the flag road, a request for the heavy commercial vehicle exclusion. The board had asked Ms. Gallagher to get a quote for a, a cert, basically, I guess, a truck circulation study for, for the town, rather than taking a look at piecemealing truck exclusions and what we should do. I think the board, at least the message that I took back and Ms. Gallagher took back was for the board to try to take a holistic look. Let's assume there are no exclusions. Let's assume that, you know, we're starting from scratch. How would we do this? And what is the best way to do this and try to manage the truck traffic coming through town? That is going to come through town in some, in some respects. She did receive a proposal. I did provide that earlier to the board. It came in, you know, rather, rather close to the meeting from a proposal from, from VHB. There is, you know, the documentation as to what they would do, the turning counts, the reporting on this. And we're looking at a, at a cost of about $15,000. It's going to take probably about 14 weeks in order for them to complete all of the work on it. The question that I have for you, I know that we had talked about, you know, we don't have this money budgeted. And is this something, we do have a, the board had asked for a placeholder on the fall town meeting to put this on. And I'm assuming that the board would like to put this on as a funding request for this purpose on the warrant. But I just wanted to get that sense from the board.
Mark, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So under the, the $15,000 for the labor fees, it talks about, in addition to the labor compensation, it talks about an additional allowance of $7,000 for traffic council and general expenses. Are we going to account for that as well at a $22,000 figure or what is your recommendation on that?
I think, I think it would make sense, you know, considering, you know, the total upset limit for the labor is 15,000. You know, the 7,000 allowance for the council expenses. You know, I, I, I think it should be at the 22 and maybe, you know, the board would want to round it up a little bit more, maybe to a, you know, to an even 25,000, simply so that you have enough money in case there's anything extra that, you know, that we find that we need to do. We're not dipping into a budget that didn't have the item budgeted.
Okay. So I guess your question to us is, are we still interested and willing to put this on?
Is this something you want to put on the warrant, you know, under the article? And if so, we will prepare, you know, prepare the, the article in that respect.
Okay. Mr. Healy, we'll start with you.
Yes. I was actually pleasantly surprised at what the number was. It seems to me a pretty big undertaking. And I think it's, you know, we were all at the, the meeting and, and, you know, there's obviously very strong sentiments and very strong rationales for doing certain things with certain roads in town. But, you know, you move one widget and another widget reacts. And I just think that having a better understanding of, of what those likely reactions are, if we consider option A, option B, and the like, I, I, I just think, I'm not sure how we can make the decision about, about what roads should be, you know, off limits to, to trucks. What, what roads should not without understanding what that's going to mean for traffic flow in the town generally. So I'm, I'm very supportive of it.
Thank you, Mr. Stivers.
I'm also very supportive. I think good data helps you make better decisions and outcomes. You can defend much better with good data. And we really don't have much good data at this point. So I'm supportive. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Stivers. Mr. Dennington.
I think Mr. Healy and Mr. Stivers have made some pretty persuasive points. I, I, the number, I didn't really have a, a context for whether that was a good number or we can do better. You know, ultimately, I think that even after this study is created, there'll be some difficult decisions to make. I think there's no getting around that. Cause I'm already, to your point, you know, the study is going to show that if you, you know, put, that one thing is going to lead to a reaction to another thing. And the one thing definitely that's, you know, top of mind is that if you, if you altered the truck exclusion on the west part of Route 30 to have a flag road truck exclusion, what, what would the consequences be? And I've just started myself thinking about that as I've been driving around town. And is, would that lead to just more trucks coming from Route 9 and just going straight across Route 30? So I haven't, I think that the study is going to help, help us make a decision. But ultimately, there is a hard decision coming at the end of this, I think.
Thank you. Ms. Malinowski.
I'm supportive of going to town meeting to fund this.
Thank you. And I am as well, Mr. Purple. And I think I, I agree with all the points made. Yeah, Andrew, we knew at the end of the day, there are going to be tough decisions to make. But I think we're doing our due diligence to get there in a methodical and, and well-thought-out way, I guess. So I'm, I'm also going to support Mr. Purple of, of moving this forward to town meeting.
Okay. Thank you. That's, that's all I have for my report.
Okay. Thank you. I'll go down the line. I'll see if anybody has any holds. We'll start with Mr. Stivers. Any holds? Sorry, Sam, you're muted.
A, and that's the only one for me.
Okay, thank you, Sam. Andrew, did you have any holds?
I also had the minutes, but just on H. I don't have any opposition to this, but I just wanted to know what what is the Cultural Arts Council? Not as familiar with it.
So Mr. Healy is a big fan of the Cultural Arts Council. So I will let Mr. Healy answer that question.
They're the folks that have been responsible for, you know, terrific photography and and painting displays at the the library and the the community house. You know, we've had, we've had them in the last couple of years and we've had conversations with them about there's the 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 efforts they put in have been so successful, certainly in my view, and I think in most people's view. You know, what, whether it's tied to the downtown initiative or otherwise, what can we be thinking of to enhance the venues, among other things, for cultural arts presentations and the like in South Grove? So they're good folks. They do incredibly good work and we'll have them back in, well, Lisa, that'll be your call, but and and you'll have the opportunity to to hear it from the horse's mouth.
Well, you could attend one of their meetings. They're virtual now. Those are pretty interesting.
They are. Also, Andrew, they do the art. They're involved in the Art on the Trails out at Chestnut Hill Farm. Prior to COVID, they actually did a teen karaoke, which was one of the things that interested me the most from the conversation that we had with them. So they do a lot of really neat things around town. Did that answer your question, Andrew?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Malinowski, did you have any holds? Mr. Healy, did I miss you? Did you have any holds?
I don't know what the letter is because I can't have multiple screens in my very remote location, but the one having to do with the the alcohol licenses.
Okay, so that is
What letter is that?
I.
Okay, okay, that's the one.
Okay, that being said, I also wanted to hold A. So do we have a motion to approve consent agenda items B, C, D, E, F, G, and H?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great, thank you. Roll call vote. Mr. Stivers.
Aye.
Ms. Brash, Ms. Brash, yeah, aye. Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Dennington? And Mr. Healy?
Aye.
Sorry, everybody jumped around on my screen there for a minute. Okay, so Sam, you started the hold on A, so we'll let you go first.
Okay. See, a couple of small things on July thirteenth, line forty five should be asked instead of as. And line three eighteen. I think it should be designation of special counsel to the Conservation Commission for the Park Central Project, which is the way the original language was written.
Okay, Sam, was that it for the thirteenth? Why don't we do the thirteenth first?
That's it for the thirteenth, and then I had the twenty fifth.
Okay. Did anyone else have any edits for the thirteen? Andrew, go ahead.
Okay, and and I'm sorry if I was just moving papers, if if any of these are repetitive, what Sam just said. Line forty five, run until July thirteenth, right?
Yep.
Line forty five should be as should be asked.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Eighty six. We're describing what Doris was saying. I think instead of peace, I think she mentioned quiet enjoyment. Did we on two ninety? What? I don't know whether that that Mr. Healy made the motion to appoint himself as the MWR and oh, the MWRTA representative.
Yep.
And Emperor.
Okay.
Joint motion.
All right, well, if that's what that was, that was, that's what it was.
That I think.
And on line three twenty two, I think state code should be Massachusetts general laws. On line three hundred and thirty two. Ms. Malinowski stated the needs must be prioritized. And then on line three hundred and thirty six, Ms. Malinowski cautioned the board to ensure that the projects fall under the four corners of the state guidelines. And I don't know if it was more accurate to say the federal guidelines.
Chelsea, sorry, it should be federal, you're right. Okay, and my my edits were covered as well. So that being said, do we have a motion to approve the minutes for July thirteenth, twenty twenty one as edited?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
All in favor, Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Healy?
Aye.
Mr. Dennington?
Aye.
And Ms. Brashio, aye. All right, Sam, go ahead with the twenty fifth.
Okay, twenty fifth, line thirty three should be complimentary with an E instead of I. And in line thirty seven, Ms. Woodford moved instead of Mr. Woodford voted. That's all I've got for that one.
Okay, anyone else have anything on that, Andrew?
On on lines thirty four, instead of saying Mr. Stivers motion to appoint, I think it should be moved. And line forty five, Miss, same thing, Miss Woodford motion to adjourn instead, change motion to moved.
Yeah, so many people do that. I've stopped flagging those, but you're right, Andrew.
Okay, anyone else have anything further? Okay, do we have a motion to approve August twenty fifth, twenty twenty one minutes as edited?
So move.
Is there a second? Okay, Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Healy?
Aye.
Mr. Dennington?
Aye.
And Ms. Brashio, aye. And I will just take a quick second to thank Ms. Barry. Our meetings have been quite lengthy for a long time and as the public can see by the minute. So many thanks to Katie for the hours that she's she's doing this and for the few edits that there actually are. So much appreciated to her for that. Okay, under I, Mr. Healy.
Yeah, when I saw that, my my recollection, which I confirmed, was that last year, the a request for alcohol licenses had been made. There are a couple of them that were made early and they might have been made in August or early September. And I think just pro forma, we approved them. And doing that gave me some pause. And so I I looked back into the the conservation restriction and the operating agreement. Basically, any of the legal documents that relate to the use of the property that basically South Row paid, you know, several million dollars for conservation protection. And what what I determined, and I I still think it's the case, is is that what the trustees are doing with the properties on Sundays isn't does not fall within any of the four corners of those agreements. And the the when we asked last year for some clarification of what the basis was, they hinged it on an educational standpoint. Well, again, if you look at the 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 public relation stuff that's done for these Sunday afternoon outings, it's got nothing to do with education. If you could slice some small part of it, it's you know, two or four percent. But even more than that, if it is education, I think I said this last year, I've never been involved in an educational event where alcohol was served. And the the, you know, sort of enforcement oversight of the conservation restriction is not a Board of Selectment issue. It falls to the Conservation Commission. We had conversations with them last year about, and I I think I thought there was a timetable for redoing the the operating agreement. I don't know if that's been done. But now we're a year later, and basically the same request is being made of us to authorize alcohol licenses for five days in five Sundays in October. I don't think it's legitimate under the legal documents that govern the use of that property. Again, it's not our issue about the fact that these things are done on Sunday afternoons, which by any stretch limits the ability for townspeople to access the property. And on top of that, they're very expensive. So I mean, two things. Number one, because it doesn't fall under any of the legal documents that give them authority to do this, I'm still opposed to giving them these alcohol licenses. That's number one. And number two, you know, we've got a new town council who wasn't involved in the drafting of the the legal documents that govern this. And I really would like him to have it for him to take a look at it. If he tells me I'm wrong and that there's there's significant flexibility in these documents to allow for these sort of events and for serving alcohol and the like, then I will defer to our town council. But until we have an opinion that 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 gives the green light to this, I don't think it's authorized under the legal operating agreements that we have for that property. And the town of South Row has a very strong multimillion dollar interest in how that property is used. So I've said my piece.
All right, why don't we go around and and get everybody's thoughts on that? Mr. Stivers?
Yeah, I certainly understand what Mr. Healy is saying. And I think it would be a good idea to get town council's opinion on this. On the other side of it, I I think that what folks are doing with Chestnut Hill Farm is a great thing. I've been to some of these events and people really enjoy them. I think it's a good thing for the town generally. I don't want to get on the wrong side of the legal requirements. On the other hand, I'm inclined to cut them some slack in terms of being able to put programs on like this. So I'm, you know, again, interested in town council's view of this, but I'm inclined to be supportive of the licenses.
Mr. Dennington?
I had not thought about the issue that Marty just raised. Marty, is your concern that the whole event? There's a problem with the whole event, the hayrides and the things like that, or just the service of alcohol?
From the Board of Selectment perspective, the alcohol. Because again, last year, when we voted not to give them alcohol licenses, when we asked for justification for these events, it was the educational function, which really is the only thing that conceivably could fall in when you look at those those documents. And I just, if that's if that's it, that it's an educational component, the idea that 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 the town of South Row is is going to okay the serving of alcohol at a an educational program for who? For kids? For I just don't think is appropriate.
Okay.
Ms. Malinowski?
I agree with Marty that we should have town council review this.
I do as well. And and Marty, you're remembering the the conversations correctly. We had lengthy conversations about this. So I I think we can certainly have council review this. We're not meeting again until the twenty first. First. So I don't know if if that's going to infringe on their ability to sell tickets and or if town council opines that it's within the four corners. So I would be open.
See me reaching forward. Can I just, can I just
Yes.
respond to that real quick? So we didn't create the, we did not create the timing issue. We were very clear last year in the vote we took that we did not think it was, the vote we took was it wasn't appropriate for alcohol to be served at what they were calling educational events. They've had noticed since last September that that was our position. And we just got the same paperwork that was the same type of paperwork that was submitted last year. So the timing issue has not been created by us, it's been created by the trustees.
Okay, so Mark, I I I'm fine with that, Marty. So let's send this off to council. Let's get his thoughts. Also, I think we should probably double check with conservation to see if they, I can't remember what the name of the document was from last year that they were redoing the the working, Sam, do you remember what the name of it was? I can't off the top of my head, but we can, we can follow up with Melissa as well to see if if that has been updated. So
Yeah, I can also just reach out to 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 the farm and let them know that this has been tabled to nine twenty one. If that affects any of their applications, say for the third, you know, and whether they're going to keep all five, you know, listed or not. So I can, I can make that reach.
Okay. All righty then, so we'll table that one. So under other matters, board and committee updates. This is going to be a new line item going forward. I know Mr. Stivers had some updates he wanted to give on some of the board and committee meetings that he's attended. So it just seemed to make sense as we now have liaisons as well. Do you just have a running item? Some some meetings, there may be some, some meetings, there may not be anything. So I know for this meeting in particular, Mr. Stivers, you had a couple of updates you wanted to give, so go right ahead.
Thanks. Yeah, these are points that I pick up as I go around and listen to committees talking. I'm not necessarily making any pitch pro or con on these kind of things, but I think they're important things to keep on the radar that may well come back to us at some point in the future. Start with the ADA committee. I attended one of their meetings where they were talking about the recent consultant report, and they had a number of questions about that and comments about it. And were a little disappointed that I think they didn't get as much input as they hoped in terms of the initial report there. So they were talking about an opportunity to come back and talk about that again with the selectmen at a follow up select meeting. And we're concerned about this, the distribution of that report to departments and did it go to the committees in town, et cetera, for review and comment? And we're interested in being part of the process for the recommended project priorities that came out of that report. And finally, I think the an important point that Lisa will recognize that came up in the Master Plan Committee is that opportunity here is to fix the problems that are likely to occur in the future, in addition to looking at the past and dealing with the issues that have been created from the past through things like building or wiring in an ADA review component to building permits, work on work by the facilities, facilities department, DPW, planning board, CONCOM, et cetera, to the various departments and boards, look through the ADA requirements as far as permitting and support projects to make sure what we build going forward is compliant as opposed to having to fix it retrospectively. So I think there's a good opportunity for us or others involved in these processes to rethink some of those processes and get those things, again, dealt with prospectively versus going back and spending a lot of money later on. Had an interesting conversation at the new golf course committee, the group of guys, they're trying to find ways to get better utilization out of the golf course, improve the facility. As I think folks have seen, last year was the best year ever for the golf course. This year looks like it's going to be even better than that. So the perverse result of the pandemic is it seemed to push people outdoors and really driven substantially increase in golf course utilization, which is a great thing. And the committee is talking about things like looking at irrigation for selected parts of the course. There's an opinion that that would be a huge boost in terms of business opportunity, looking at past paving the parking lot and driveway, looking at food and beverage options. And things like screening along Lattice Quama Road, I think as we've seen, there was a recent injury on Lattice Quama from the golf ball. So we need to again, think about that from a safety and liability standpoint, as well as as ongoing issue relative to windows being uh as ongoing issue relative to windows being broken along that stretcher road as well. So again, a lot of energy and effort coming on the new golf course committee, and I think that they can do some great things. We'll see some of these projects coming forward. Uh final one on my list is I listened on the historical commission meeting. Uh there was concern expressed about the condition of the old burial ground from tree limbs that are dead and might be at risk of falling on some of the gravestones there. So I'm assuming that's a DPW issue, but I was gonna pass that along to Karen, but it seems to me that's a bit maintenance issue to get on the list. So so that's my list at this point. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have anything they might like to add over and above? I'm saying no. Okay, great. Next up is review of proposed policy on remote work. So this was was one of the things that um Vanessa has been working on. She she put a tremendous amount of work to bring this policy forward. Um there was no consistency in whether someone could work remotely um or there was no process, no real policy. Um so Vanessa has spent quite a bit of time and she she came up with this document. I know one of the concerns I had had heard from department heads and Mr. Purple, I'll I'll jump to you next. Um one of the concerns I had heard from a department head was, you know, if if somebody COVID has shown that we can effectively work from home in in certain instances. And if somebody has a project or something that's better utilized to be able to work from home, then this gives the department head the opportunity on a something short term, or say for instance, somebody has a childcare issue even or whatever, and and they can still effectively work from home. This policy gives them the opportunity to do that with department head approval, but anything more substantial than just a day here, a day there, also requires approval from the town administrator. And and Mark, I'll I'll let you jump in here. Um
Yeah, I, well, you know, you you really were the beginning and the end of that discussion. I think you did a nice job. I I I do want to add though um that um and and Mrs. Hale knows I'm the first one to throw myself under the bus before um someone does it for me. Um but uh you know, this was something that um Vanessa has been talking about now for the last eighteen months. And obviously, when we put um town operations remote, with the exception of the ones that we just could not um for the pandemic, um there really wasn't a need to do this. We were already remote and everything in that. And Vanessa kept saying, we need this. This is something we need. And then as we started to matriculate back, it became more obvious that this was something that we needed and um you know, some communities already had these policies. Some communities put these together and tried to put that COVID angle on the policies. Um and uh um you know, I I think the the thing that I was concerned about, and I'll just reiterate um what the chair just said was that, you know, we really didn't have a way to um address things consistently and fairly, you know, to employees. So what may make sense to you, you know, um on a case by case basis, really just wasn't working. And I think, you know, um there there needs to be some consistency to ensure that if it makes sense for the department head and the employee and for the operations of the town, then we should do it. Um but at the same time, if at some point down the road, the agreement no longer makes sense, I think we need to be able to have the ability to pull that back and bring the employee back, you know, into the office from from the remote assignment. Um and so um like I said, I I would um um Madam Chair, turn it over to Vanessa if she has anything that she wants to add. Again, this was this was her baby. She put, you know, she put a lot of work into it. Um I know she did work with uh with Ms. Esposito to um to make the application form a fillable form, which means it won't look so ugly, you know, when we do have them come across my desk. Um so I turn it over to Vanessa.
Thank you. You both. Um I just wanted to add that echo the comments about making something consistent for all our town employees that this would apply to. That's really important to me because we get questions a lot, Mark or myself. You know, well, can we do this? Can we do that? And and we really want, just for good morale, to have something that applies to everybody in the same way. Um I would also add that um over the past month, I've been working on six different recruitments um for for the town um staff that you you know, we really need to bring in. Um and that's a question that I've been getting. Well, you know, what what is the flexibility? Is there any remote um applicability? So I I think there are, that's, this is a a hot topic right now. So um I'm I'm pleased that the board is addressing this and I look forward to your feedback.
And I'll just add, before we go around, is one of the things I was really looking for and hoping for, and it's accomplished in this, is some level of flexibility to your department heads. Um you know, a- as well as the consistency piece. Again, a department head knows best, you know, if their employee was productive during COVID. And and again, it allows the the um employee a little bit of leeway. Um again, not on a long-term basis. That's what I was looking for. Was was something more flexible for the department heads, but anything on a more consistent basis does need to go through Mr. Purple as your personnel director. So um that being said, I'll I'll open it up to the board for thoughts, for questions. Um but again, I would thank Ms. Hale because she spent a tremendous tremendous amount of time doing this and it was exactly what what I was hoping for. So uh we'll start with Mr. Stivers.
Okay, thanks. I guess I've got four quick comments. One, um I think they're a great step forward. Um I think very helpful to get this clarified for people. So I heartily agree with what Lisa commented here. It's 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 good to get this done. Um I I guess I I did see a number of typo kind of things in there that uh I'll be glad to provide feedback on, not a big issue. The uh one thing that was not totally clear to me was uh how it deals with the other elected boards, like planning, library, assessors, the board of health. I think we need to be clear as far as who's responsible there. I mean, my my personal view is that those decisions ought to be made by uh the appropriate person in those organizations. I don't think those should run through the town administrator, although uh should be notified, I think, of of decisions that come out of that. But that's again, my own personal view of it. Um I was concerned about the length of time to pull the plug on a deal that's not working. It's now in there for ten days uh that uh we can rescind the agreement or whatever. I think it ought to be much shorter, like two or three days, at most four or five days in there. And um finally, let me just remember here. Oh, question about applying to for temporary employees. It says it does not apply to temporary employees. I actually think that there may be circumstances where we hire a temporary employee to do something specifically out of the office uh based on the needs of the particular job for some, you know, temporary period of time. So not that everybody would do that as a temporary employee, but it seems to me that uh making that available to temporary employees as well gives reasonable flexibility. So those are my comments. Thanks again, Vanessa. I think this is a good step forward though.
Mr. Purple, do you want to address any of those?
Um I get to pick. So I I think the only one that I'd address right now is that i- if if we're gonna hire a temporary employee and they're not working in the town, they're, we're gonna hire it as a contractor and not an employee. Um so I I think, you know, I think that um you know, that that just doesn't make, you know, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense, I think, to bring somebody as a temporary employee and then have them working remotely. So if it doesn't, if there's not a front-facing need, then then I I think we don't need to do it that way.
My my issue there is flexibility. If that gives you the flexibility, you need to carve them out. I don't have a problem.
Yeah. Now, remember, part-time employees, we do consider permanent as permanent employees.
So they would be covered by this.
They would be covered by this.
Good.
So so I I so like I said, you know, a permanent employee doesn't mean anybody over thirty-five hours. So if we've got, you know, a part-time employee who works a regular schedule, regular basis, that person is gonna be covered under this policy.
Okay, thanks.
And Sam, I'll just add on on the other piece about elected boards. I mean, it's it's we have a lot of policies in town that may necess- not necessarily apply. You would hope that, you know, those boards, trustees, whatever, you know, would have would abide by the same policies as everybody else. But we know that, you know, we we have no control over um you know, elected boards as to you know, that that govern themselves. But we would hope that we would give them a policy that they also would be um receptive to extending to their employees as well.
And my hope is that we just be clear about that in this policy, because the way I read this, any town employee is covered by this. So let's let's say what we mean there, and I think that'll help people understand. And we can also say, you know, this is for you know, board of selectmen related employees and we we request and expect that everybody will do the same thing.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Um let's see, Mr. Dennington?
Thank you. Um thank you, Vanessa, for doing this. I think it's a good step forward to have a process in place. I have um I guess two comments slash questions on page two. Um at the top of the page, it says, the option to work remotely requires the approval of the employees department head, the town administrator and or the appointing authority. Um so to me, and then at the um end, there's kind of a model form of a remote work agreement. We're kind of, it has signatures for basically all of those people. I just think it should, the document should be clear about know that and or part of it, exactly whose um approvals are required. And then the second issue that I had was, you know, definitely there are some departments that are different in terms of they're more front-facing with citizens to, you know, taxpayers. I I just would still like to see that, you know, some and I think of them more as the uh the departments that are on the first floor of of the townhouse more so than the second floor. Um those are really places where you expect to be able to, if someone wants to, instead of, you know, call or or send an email, to just walk into town hall and say, um, I want to pay my taxes or can you please, I would like to look at the file for what permits were pulled on this property, that that is still consistent. Is the idea that for some departments, there's still always be at least one person who'd be able to interact with the public.
Um Vanessa took her mute off, so I'm gonna let her go first.
Thank you, Mr. Dennington. Yeah, that that's, we wanted to make sure that we were clear that office coverage was still paramount here um because of exactly what you were saying. So that um there should never be a case that unless there's an illness at the last minute or something, that uh it's a person coming to the town hall wouldn't be able to get service from it would find at least one person in every department. So um thank you.
And and we have those, just to just to add on to that, we have those conversations a lot, um Mr. Dennington, about you know, we have fewer and fewer opportunities to have these face-to-face interactions of people. People pay bills online. They said they apply for permits online. You know, they make phone calls, you know, it it's much easier to do things uh electronically now. So you know, those face-to-face interactions are very important, and if people are taking the time to come in, we need to be there. So I think that that is why, you know, it's not simply that the employee wants to do the remote piece. It's that the department head agrees that it'd be good for the employee and the department still will be able to provide that level of service in person for people, you know, who do come in. So that's why it's gotta be both. And if things don't, you know, if 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 you 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 agree to do it, you move forward, and then the department head finds out that, you know, this really isn't working. I really, you know, we're finding that we're we're have, we're lacking service in person, you know, then they can pull that back. And um I think, you know, we would have to go back and take a look at Mr. Stivers' comments, you know, is ten days too long? Um you know, obviously, if someone's doing remote work, they are going to probably um maybe shuffle some things around in their life that they can make adjustments, because now they're home. And then to undo those things and put them back may take a little bit of time. So I think that's something that that we would obviously, you know, um think about as well.
No, and I'm I'm glad you said that, because that was my, and you know, I wanted to respond to what Sam said there, but I can definitely see the reason to have a longer time, ten days rather than because um someone gets apartment approval to go remote, they then their, you know, childcare pickups are made based on that. It it might take a little time to adjust if you're called back in.
Right.
Great. Is that it, Andrew? Great. Ms. Malinowski?
Um thank you, Vanessa, for putting this together. Um I think it makes sense to try it out, see how it goes. Um did you solicit any department head feedback on this?
I did talk to a few people informally, but not a survey of any means. We wanted to first see how the board felt about this draft. But I would like to talk about it at a department head meeting now that we've had some feedback from you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mr. Haley?
Um yeah, um Vanessa, just following up on what um um Chelsea said. Um it's two things. Number one, um uh if if we're gonna do this, you know, there there are, obviously, a lot of things have changed with with COVID. I mean, my view of, we call it telework. My view of telework has changed dramatically. Um you know, because I was forced to to you know, put together a a remote office that functioned at least as well as my office at at um in Boston. Um so if i- it just strikes me, though, that that there may be some um department heads who um view telework differently than others. And I just think if the town's gonna do this, um and that's why I was glad you mentioned the uh the uh department head meeting. Um I think it's important that we tell department heads that the town is doing this. And and um the the idea of having, whether you want to call it remote work, telework, whatever, um as a as a valuable thing for town employees is something that is important. Um and we don't want unnecessary impediments to that. And following on that, um it was unclear to me, if for instance, a department head says no, does it ever get to you, Mark?
Or is that the end of it?
My understanding, and Vanessa can correct me if I'm wrong, is that if there is no agreement to do it between the department head and the employee, it never gets to me.
Okay. I guess I'd think about, I'm sorry, go ahead, Vanessa.
I I was just gonna say, I I think that technically is correct, but I I do think um by word of mouth, we would probably be involved at some level in that conversation.
Okay. Um and the second thing is, the reason I think this is so important is what is something you said. Uh um private industry, um obviously, state, municipal, et cetera, they're all doing things like this. And if 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 we have a very good applicant for a position and the town does not have a a remote work um policy that is attractive and flexible and and potentially serves the needs of our employees, we're not gonna get that employee. It's they're gonna go somewhere else, because it's it's, again, not only is important, but but um other actors in both the private and public sector are moving strongly in that direction. So and again, very nice job on on the uh the policy.
Thank you. Great. Okay, so Sam, will you forward to uh Vanessa, you said you had a couple minor edits. Will you forward those to her?
If if Vanessa will send me the Word version, all I have is the PDF version, so it'll be easier to do in Word.
Sure, I can do that first thing tomorrow.
Sam, you didn't redline the whole document, though, did you?
Right. Not yet, but
Four changes.
No, no, no. You said just a couple minor changes.
Four comments, I said.
Okay. Um okay, so Vanessa, sorry, Sam, go ahead.
I will do it quickly, Vanessa.
Thank you. So Vanessa, do you, I assume you now have, based on the feedback enough to to move forward to the next phase, which is to get feedback from department heads and
Yes.
um and then we'll put this on a a future agenda uh as an update and the board to sign.
Great. Thanks very much.
Great. And again, Vanessa, thank you very much. I know that was a lot of time and a lot of, a lot of energy went into doing that, so very much appreciated. So thank you. All right, folks. Next up on the agenda, appointment, appoint members to the Noise by Law Ad-Hoc Committee and Discuss Committee Charge. We're gonna talk about the charge briefly, quickly, I think. Um based on having um twelve um candidates um for us to discuss and and appoint tonight. I was wondering, I had, we re-added this on the agenda just to see, I anticipated that there might be some discussion about changing um the number from five um on the committee. So I thought I would open the door, you know, to having these discussions. Um I'll I'll throw my hat in the ring on the first one. I mean, I very um I'm interested in in increasing it, but not by too much that it makes it unmanageable with the job that they have to do. So I'd be interested, I I would be interested in in a potentially making this seven. But I'm certainly open to hearing um, you know, the the rest of the board's thoughts on that. So uh Mr. Dennington? We'll start with you and and get your thoughts on potentially changing the the number.
Um you know, I I would be supportive of changing it to seven. I know I, we've kind of gone, as a board, we've kind of gone back and forth on this. And I think that definitely one thing which has changed tonight was the the quality. It was, it was very pleasant to see how the number of people who all had different things to bring, who are really interested in getting, and that included people that have been involved in things a lot, and people that were just stepping forward for the first time. Um you know, I as I was, I started to prepare, okay, if I had to select five people Um, you know, I, as I was, I started to prepare, okay, if I had to select five people, it'd be this people, if it's seven, this people. And I was noticing that. Um, there is a difference because there's um, there are certain types of competencies. Um, professional backgrounds that people brought, that if you had to limit it to five. That there'd be certain backgrounds of people who I would like to, I think it would be helpful for them to be on the committee, that there just wouldn't be enough. And I also am thinking about, you know, this was, I think it was great to see so many people um, interested in. I didn't know whether we would get this many volunteers, but a way to keep in contact with these people. So even people that, for whatever reason, you know. Just because we have so many people won't get appointed a way to keep in contact with them. So the bottom line is, um. We can, I can do five, I can do seven, but I I do not think more than seven would be good at all.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Malinowski.
I agree with Andrew. I think um, I would be willing to go up to seven. I think um, you know. My list of people is kind of a mix between the first session and the second session, so I'm definitely glad that we. Um, extended the time for this, and I I do think that Andrew's right, that if we keep it at five. We're missing that wide breadth of experience that I think the groups um, between groups one and two. Um, kind of gave us, so I would definitely be in favor of seven.
Thank you, Mr. Haley.
Seven's fine with me.
Mr. Stivers?
Yeah, I I agree, seven. I went through An- Andrew's exercise, and I was very uncomfortable with what I had to do with five. And I've I've served on five, seven, nine, and and bigger committees. And I think seven is pushing it, but again, given the expertise we have out there in the applicant pool. It would be a shame not to take advantage of that, so I'm I'm fine with seven.
Yeah, and Andrew, to to kind of piggyback on your point as well, so there's going to be five people, unfortunately, amazing people. That have stepped forward, that we're so appreciative, that I would hope that they would consider, if not this committee, there's a lot of vacancies out there. And, you know, I would hope um, that they would consider stepping forward for something else, because again. I think, I think the one thing they should all take was, this this isn't an easy decision. I mean, we had some really amazing people step forward. Uh, for the, for this committee. So, that being said, um, first off. Do we have a motion to change the Noise by Law Ad-Hoc Committee Charge to membership consisting of seven at-large members?
So move.
Is there a second? Okay, thank you. Uh, roll call, Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Dennington? I didn't hear you, Andrew, sorry.
Aye, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
And Ms. Brascio, aye. Okay, so that being done, so I was considering. Kind of the best path to go forward on this, and I I was hoping we would go to seven. Um, I actually created a spreadsheet, so what I was thinking was, unless, obviously, I'm open to suggestions, was. I think we all have a of a path of at least five, um, when we started this process knowing. So if we would go through the five that we think, I think we're going to end up with seven. I think we're going to be fairly similar on most. And um, I think that's, to me, that makes sense as a starting point. I'll I'll track it on the spreadsheet that I have. Um, so, or we can either do it as five, or we can all just start out with the seven and see where we end up. I'm I'm open to suggestions on the board for that, um.
I would prefer to just do the seven.
Just do seven? Okay, that's fine. So, okay, that being said, everybody's good with that? All right, so we will start with Ms. Malinowski, you're actually at the top of my list, so go right ahead and I'll check them off.
All right, so Goodney.
Okay.
Um, Perrin. Mellow, Dunderdale, Lapine, Stanton, and Fling, in no particular order.
Right, okay, very much appreciated. Uh, Mr. Haley? And we lost.
Actually, Chelsea, Chelsea, could you go um, and just say them a little slower?
Sure. So, Goodney. Perrin. Mellow. Dunderdale. Lapine. Stanton. And Fling.
I have Goodney. And I'll I'll try to go if I do or don't have them in your order, um, for some consistency. Perrin. Mellow. Dunderdale. I do not have Lapine. Um, I do have Stanton. I have Fling. And the um, the the uh, the initial doctor from tonight.
Doctor Kandarpa?
Yeah. So those are my seven.
Okay, and Sam?
Yeah, hi, uh, Lapine, Foster, Hashish, Perrin, Goodney, and Mellow.
Goodney and Mellow, okay, and Andrew?
I had um, Lapine. Foster. Cahill. Mellow.
Sorry, bear with me one second, Andrew. Okay, Cahill, Mellow, okay.
Fling.
Yep.
Goodney and Perrin.
Perrin, okay, and I had down, again, in no particular order, as everyone has said. I had um, Mr. Lapine, Ms. Dunderdale, Cindy Foster, Dr. Kandarpa. Um, Mr. Fling, Mr. Mellow, and Mr. Goodney. So, that being said, um. Mr. Goodney will be appointed. Let me just add these up real quick. One, two. One, two, four. Two, four. Okay, Mr. Goodney. Mr. Mellow. Mr. Fling. Mr. Lapine, and I'll be happy to go back and and if anyone's interested in the numbers. Um, Mr. Perrin, one, two, three, four, five. And the next two would be Lisa, Ms. Dunderdale, and then for the seventh seat, we actually have a tie. Between um, Ms. Foster, Dr. Kandarpa, and Mr. Stanton. The, so, um. Does anyone have a, have a strong preference?
I had Ms. Foster simply because she represents the landscapers.
You know what? Let me take two steps back. I made a mistake, actually. I apologize. Sam, let me just verify. So Andrew, you had Ms. Foster as well?
Yes.
Yes, and so did I. So that's actually, that that's three. So let me just verify my counts one more time, and I think we're all set. Three, one, three, one, two, four. Five, two, four, five. Okay, so it looks like Mr. Goodney. Mr. Goodney, Mr. Mellow, Mr. Lapine, Mr. Fling, Mr. Perrin. Um, Ms. Dunderdale, and Ms. Foster, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So, those are the seven um, that I came up with. So, to the the. Uh, remainder, I would strongly hope and suggest that you'll continue to um. You know, loo- look for a path to serve the town. Um, I think that um. This was by no means an easy process for any of us, um, and again, we we thank you all for stepping forward. Um, and um, you will be getting notice, and and again, we thank you. I don't know if anyone else wants to add anything other than that. Please feel free. Okay, again, thank you all for stepping forward, and and we look forward to seeing the the wonderful product of your work. Okay, next up, discussion of traffic concerns on Oak Hill. If we could bring um, Mr. Uh, Pfaff forward, I know he had presented us with um, some information. Andrew, thank you for. Um, providing all the information that you did. Um, I don't know if everyone's had a chance to go through it, but Andrew, if you'd like to just. Um, you know, briefly walk us through um, some of the points you have in here, um, just with the anticipation of. I I don't anticipate we'll get anything more tonight, Andrew, than some, basically some further questions that we want answered and, you know, some some homework. So, uh, that being said, I'm going to go to Mr. Dennington first, and I know that you had spoken to, oh, you're both Andrews. All right, I hate to do it with with Ms. Cook did AD and AP. Um, go ahead, Chelsea.
Sorry, did we take a motion on the appointments?
Not.
Okay.
You are correct.
Sorry, I didn't mean, I just, nope, and I just.
Nope, I don't know, I was thinking ahead. So, Andrew P., bear with us two seconds. Do we have a motion to appoint Peter Goodney, Lee Perrin, John Mellow, Tim Fling. Cindy Foster, Lisa Dunderdale, and Peter Lapine to the Noise by Law Ad-Hoc Committee?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sorry, um, roll call, Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Dennington?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
And Ms. Brascio, aye. Thank you, Chelsea. Sorry about that. Okay, so Andrew D., um, why don't you start with, I know that you had initial discussions with Andrew P. So, and I'm.
So, thank you. I'll just be very brief. I mean, just to explain uh, the kind of the genesis of this, um. Mr. Pfaff had alerted me to these recent trap accidents. Traffic accidents on Oak Hill Road, and the video that he circulated, that's a pretty unusual accident. And um, I'd also heard independently from Mr. Fernandez, uh, who had was raising kind of the same concerns. So, um, you know, Andrew is a very organized guy, so I'll let him just get right into it, uh, to um. Lay out the issues as he, as he sees them.
And Vanessa, can we bring over Eric Fernandez to start? He helped me put together the presentation, and then um. I think for the rest of the Oak Hill members, we'll, have you raise your hand once we're done with kind of getting to the gist of it, if that works. Vanessa, can you just allow me to share screen and I'll put up the presentation if that helps? Let me know if you can see that, okay? Yeah, okay. So this is, this is basically, you know, and thank you all for taking the time to meet with us, um, you know, certainly, I've lived on Oak Hill for a few years and and um. Yeah, knew it was a busy road, grew up in town, knew it was a busy road, but as of late, it's become a little bit more uh, untenable in terms of the. Amount of of accidents and and kind of the unsafe nature of it. Um, I think under COVID, we kind of got to the point where we had a uh, a lull and and people got used to it. And 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 I think now it's speeds keep, seem to be increasing, the accidents seem to be increasing. So, um, for Eric Fernandez and I did. Go around the neighborhood and and we talked to um, a majority of the Oak Hill residents. Uh, I can't remember the amount we got, but like, it's about fifty, sixty percent, seventy percent of the residents. Um, to a T, every one of them was in favor of trying to do some some work on the road, especially lowering speed limits and then making the road safer. Um, so basically, we put together this presentation to kind of talk about what we'd like to do in terms of the requests of the Selectmen, DPW, and Mass DOT. Um, the basic, you know, constraints are, it's a very thickly settled road, there's a large number of children on this road. There's not, you know, very little sidewalks just at the bottom of the hill. Um, the rest of the road has basically no shoulder, so to walk on it, you're really in the road. It has a pretty high uh, amount of commercial truck traffic and and especially tractor trailer trucks. And and I commend you for doing the work you're talking about with the study in town for tractor trailer trucks, and the Oak Hill will be one that. Uh, certainly has a lot of commercial traffic and trucks. Um, you know, some of the information I found in researching it is. The, you know, all the way to Sutton, there's signs sending people through Ashland into Oak Hill to get to uh, Mass Pike and Route Nine. So, it's definitely a cut through, and it's definitely sending a lot of people down this, you know, small stretch of South Borough. That certainly impacts the thickly settled nature of the residential district. Um, and then some of the other pieces is there's multiple blind driveways uh, on the street. Um, I witnessed my neighbor get rear-ended about a week ago, uh, just somebody going too fast and then trying to back out of their driveway. I saw a uh, somebody backing out of my neighbor's driveway about three days ago that almost got hit. So it's just. You know, from every neighbor I've talked to, they've all had those close accidents or had an accident. Um, it, you know, while it's very straight, nicely paved and and marked road, uh, there's a lot of, lot of houses and a lot of blind driveways that. Um, the speed definitely becomes an impact. Um, we were hoping that you could use the new newly passed uh, Section seventeen C uh, adoption that we did at the last town meeting. Um, and talking to actually Karen Galligan today, the road is uh, what they call a special um, speed limit road. So, it might not be able to qualify unless we remove that, um, which might be more of a process. Um, but we do have the ability to also talk to Mass DOT and try to get the speed limit lowered because of the increase in accidents. And also the ad- addition of uh, Walgreens at this time has increased a lot of the traffic and so, so forth. So, I think it's, you know, as much as we can to try to lower that speed limit, um, ideally to twenty-five, if not back to thirty, um, which is what it is on Oak Street. Um, a- and, you know, and then uh, add some some radar signs, uh, which now Ms. Galligan also said was was a good idea. And, you know, it's certainly done it on other streets, um, no Jake braking sign or or no compression braking as the down slope towards Route Nine. Me and my neighbors constantly hear it all hours of the night, da, 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 of the the trucks braking, and and it's just lovely to go to sleep too. Um, so she's going to look into that and um, you'll see if we can add that. Chief Paulus also said that, you know, that was doable. Um, sidewalks uh, would be great. So I think especially as you're looking at what streets do we send. Heavy tractor trailer, commercial trucks down, Oak Hill will probably always remain on that that list, you know, along with eighty-five and Framingham Road. Um, but if we're going to do that, and we know that's what the purpose is going to serve to alleviate some of that Route eighty-five traffic. Um, it it should be safe, and it should be safe with sidewalks, it should be safe with crosswalks. Um, there actually used to be crosswalks on the road, but they were taken out as of the last paving. Mostly due to the fact that there weren't sidewalks up to the crosswalk, so it didn't make sense to motorists why there would be one there. Um, and then since the crosswalks were there, the people walking thought they had the protection of the crosswalk, and and so it's kind of an accident waiting to happen. Um, so I think ideally, some more sidewalks, um, sooner rather than later, I'd like to see them at least to Walnut Street. Um, with a crosswalk there to get to the trails, because a lot of people travel, um, you know, by my house on the side, side of the road to get to the trails. And I think that would be a a relatively easier sidewalk implementation, just extend it that far versus going all the way down. But I think it would make sense to go all the way down to Ashland Line, uh, which it was number, I think, four on the list of. Uh, sidewalks from the the sidewalk committee years ago. It's also on the Complete Streets Plan Top Thirty Project. So, it's it's still on our list of sidewalks to be done, but again, I think we should make an effort to get to it sooner rather than later. Um, and then the other part that we get to is the Route Nine intersection, which, and you know, as people have seen on some of the Facebook pages or on the blogs. It's certainly a dangerous intersection, both there and at Breakneck Hill. Um, lots of red light, uh, people running the red light. I would say forty percent of the time that I go to that light, somebody's running the red light. Um, and and most residents noted to wait a a second or two to make sure people stop, but people that are traveling it that don't know. Um, you know, get hit. My wife was the second car after a first car got got T-boned the other day. Um, and that, you know, that's certainly something we want to try to avoid. Um, unfortunately, there's been fatalities on that intersection, so. Um, as much as we can do to get the Mass DOT to adjust the timing, so it's a little bit safer. And then they're proposing legislator, legislature to pass the State House and Senate for red light cameras within the Commonwealth, which they don't allow. Um, they're big in Rhode Island and some of the other states certainly helps, so I think that would be a great intersection, probably also Breakneck Hill to to put those in. Uh, so that's kind of the um, laundry list of pieces. There's another um, ask that we had in terms of, you know, making it a. Truck exclusion, which would be difficult. We would need Ashland to sign off on that, and most residents kind of understand that. Um, but there is one component of the truck exclusion that in a residential area, you might be able to have a nighttime truck exclusion. Um, so I think also asking Ms. Galligan to go back to. So I think also asking Ms. Galligan to go back to Mass DOT to understand what that means. And would that be possible is kind of part of the ask here. And I can pause there before I go through anything else.
Yeah, I was just going to say, why don't we, we, we open it up. I have a few questions just from, from what you said. So why don't we just, before we move forward and actually some of the questions might, might play into some of what you have further within your document. So two seconds here. Why don't we start with? Why don't we start with Mr. Healy?
Lisa, I'm fine. I don't have any questions. I mean, it's just, I guess my comment is that this, this in my mind ties in closely with what we talked about earlier tonight with is the omnibus study of what needs to be done with roads in town. You know, I, I, I bet a lot of money that that flipped car on Oak Hill was texting, but I could be wrong. So I, I, I think, I think all of these are reasonable asks. As I said, and I think it fits, fits very nicely with what we talked about earlier tonight.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stivers.
Yeah, I, again, I think all this is reasonable. I guess I would sort of divide the world up into what we might be able to consider short term versus longer term. I think that the traffic study we're talking about can be very helpful. But I've also personally observed, but I think there's a lot of speeding, particularly on the downhill stretch there going north toward Route Nine. And I was a little surprised at Ms. Galligan's comment that speeding doesn't seem to be an issue based on the traffic study. I'm very interested in finding out who that person was going ninety-nine miles an hour with the traffic studies. I'm guessing that's a data glitch. But again, there are enough people going fifty and sixty. All you need is a few cars doing that kind of speed and they're looking for trouble. So it seems to me that something like the radar speed signs where we've used in other places is a very good option to pursue as quickly as possible. And then other signage like the Jake braking and so forth is, again, relatively inexpensive. It might be useful to, to consider here. And longer term, I also very much agree with Mr. Baff that sidewalks along at least key parts of that road are, should be an important part of our complete streets and other infrastructure development plans. So good data, significant problem that we certainly should address. Thank you.
Mr. Dennyton.
I, I agree, Sam, that there is a lot of, some of these things are some reasonable things that can be done at a low cost to help address the concerns. And on the north, if you, if you keep going through the Route Nine intersection, I guess it's Central Street, you know, there is a a, a sign which tells you how fast you're going on that side of the road. Okay, so that helps. I mean, the, the problem with the street from just my own, you know, layperson's opinion is it's, it's so straight, it kind of encourages you to go fast. And when I drove back and forth, drove on it back and forth a couple of times, I noticed that from the from the, from the Mass Pike overpass near the Ashland border up to the Route Nine intersection, the speed limit increases at the top of the hill. And it seems like, you know, even if it's just a five mile an hour increase in the speed limit from thirty to thirty-five, it kind of encourages you to go faster. And it's really not a place where you really should be encouraged to go faster because there's a dangerous intersection at the, at the down part of the hill.
Thank you. Ms. Malinowski.
I don't think I have any questions. I just have a few comments. I don't think that we've had Section seventeen C approved yet by the AG, right? And in terms of the Jake braking, I, I think that would only work if you travel that road regularly, right? And know that you're not supposed to Jake brake. Because I assume by the time you go to Jake brake, you're gonna be approaching the intersection. So I just don't know how effective that would be. I did get an opportunity to review the accidents listed. I would like to hear from Chief Paulus on if speed was a factor. And I agree with Marty's assessment of the accident that we were presented with. That maybe, you know, maybe it was speed, maybe it wasn't, but it probably was some distract, distracted driver. So I, you know, I appreciate the enthusiasm around Mr. Faff's presentation here. You know, I think the, the sidewalk conversation is a larger conversation around town. And, and I also think speeding around town is a larger conversation than just Oak Hill. And I think, you know, this board has you know, taken guidance from town meeting in terms of the citizens petition that Mr. Linden brought forward. You know, and now unfortunately, there's misinformation out there about that impacting other roads in town. So I just think we need to, you know, make sure that whatever decisions we make, we're very clear and have, you know, a path forward so that we don't create confusion for other areas in town.
Thank you. So I actually had some of the same concerns that have been mentioned before. I know how annoying the Jake brakes and how loud it can be. I'm fairly close to the Mass Pike, so I seem to hear them all the time myself. I just, I would be curious to know, A, how to enforce that. And if a truck is going too fast, that it needs to use its Jake brake, what safety issues we may have that may be their only option short of running down, you know, to the light. So I would, I would certainly like to get more information on that. One of my big questions was Andrew had, Baff had addressed that is, I wondered how we could do a truck exclusion and where those trucks would go if Ashland says, no, we're not doing a truck exclusion. I can tell you, I'm on Oregon, and I certainly don't want those tractor trailers coming down here. They already do, unfortunately. So I'd be interested how, again, whether a nighttime exclusion in, in how that could potentially work. So I think there's a lot of questions for Ms. Galligan here. I'd like to know, Andrew, also where the crosswalks were that are now gone. The only place I can think of maybe at Walnut. So I'm just curious, you know, where those, where those were and where they went. And I agree with Chelsea that, that sidewalks are a huge issue all over town. We, we have had this discussion time and time and time again. And as I look at this, I'd certainly like to hear from Karen. I'd like to hear from Chief, Chief Paulus. And, um, you know, if, if we're looking to do something, something short term, based on, you know, some, some of the requests from the neighborhood, I mean, for Pine Hill, you know, we, we talked about the radar speed signs. And if that's something we're looking to consider, we should probably do that sooner rather than later. As we looking for funding sources for that, as we do have, at this point, we still have a fault town meeting. So I appreciate all of the concerns in here. I, I, unfortunately, I, this is another one of the streets here in Southborough that were cut throughs for everywhere else. And these, these issues just keep popping up. Andrew, I thank you in the neighborhood for bringing these to us. Again, I don't think there's any answers here tonight other than to know that we recognize the issues that you've brought to us. And, you know, we can have some further discussions, you know, with Karen and Chief Paulus and try to find some form of res- resolution for you.
And Lisa, I just put up, this is where the crosswalks were. There were, there were four, basically at the side streets, Walnut, Assery, etc. And then
I agree. I don't quite know why they would be there because they're basically, like you said, they go nowhere. So.
Yeah. If it's okay, if I could just see if Eric, who kind of co-author it, has any questions. And then if there's any, anybody else on Oak Hill that might have joined, can just put their two cents in.
Okay, go right ahead.
I appreciate the time and the consideration, everyone. Obviously, I think I'll just be brief, but we know we're not the only road in town that has safety concerns. Everybody wants a safe neighborhood for their kids and their families and their friends. I think from our perspective, as Andrew did a really good job of laying out, there does seem like there's just a consistent increase. And I think there's changes to the neighborhood, as there always are over time. Talking to neighbors who have been here for significantly longer than Andrew and myself have, you know, thirty years plus, this isn't the first time this conversation has come before the Board of Selectmen and before the town. But I will say that as of recent, the demographics have changed. We've got at least fifteen kids under the age fifteen within a very small space. Those kids are riding the bus. Those kids are walking down the limited sidewalk across the, the, the crossingway, Cross Route Nine to the playground down there. You know, we've got dogs, we've got families. It has changed. The new development of the townhouse is just, I guess, south of Walgreens, again, has, has continuing and is continuing to change the demographic. So obviously, personally, I feel very strongly with two kids under three. And we've seen a, a, a number of accidents. And I appreciate that you folks do recognize that. I do see that. I would just like to appreciate Mr. Stivers' comments and, and really see, ask that, that, that's honed in on, meaning what are the short-term changes that can make a noticeable difference? We've seen those radar signs be effective in other areas of the town. It doesn't seem like that's a new solution. As Mr. Dennyton pointed out, we have them on the other side of Route Nine, and they're very effective. In preparing for this meeting, there are a number of studies out there, especially in speed limits in residential or thickly settled areas where the speed limit is between twenty-five or thirty-five miles an hour, where the placement of that sign has been shown to increase compliance to the speed limit as much as fifty percent. And that's a short term as well as a long term. Some of those studies are two years out from the initial date. I think there's, I think, you know, that I would point to is a really, really strong short-term solution. In addition with the considerations as part of potentially a larger plan regarding the speed limit. Again, the neighborhood is changing, has changed quite a bit. So, you know, any small concessions that can be done in short term would be much appreciated. And my final point that I just wanted to follow up is Mr. Dennyton did reference, on the other side of Route Nine, by the Fayetteville Playground, there is a radar sign. It is a, a, a very, also, I think consistently enforced area. It's very, very common. You see cruisers there doing a great job and making sure people are here. I, I would like to see if that's a consideration because again, it, it feels like as soon as you cross the street, you're in a different world comparatively. And some of that's trucks accessing Route Nine and then the Mass Pike. But I think some of that is the way that those traffic signs, etc., have been laid out. So again, thank you for your time. I just really appreciate it and greatly hope that we can see some short-term change as well as work together as a community to what's appropriate long term. So, thank you.
No, thank, thank you very much. And again, we, we, we hear the concerns that you have and hopefully, you know, we can work towards maybe some, some short-term solutions, you know. This is the first step, you know, having these conversations. You know, we were able to do some things on Pine Hill Road and, and, you know, some other roads. So hopefully, we can, we can do something. We can continue the conversations. This is only the start. So Andrew, you.
And Lisa, there's, there's two hands. Is it okay if we bring over Mr. Linden and Mr. Challen just to, for a brief comment?
Yep. Let's, let's start with Mr. Challen, I think. And then we'll bring Mr. Linden over.
Great, thank you.
And, and would you, Andrew, do you mind taking your screen?
Oh, yeah, let me turn that off.
Thank you.
There we go.
Good evening, Mr. Challen. Are you there?
I'm here. I'm showing us.
Mr. Linden, hold on just two seconds. Let me just, oh. There he is, Mr. Challen. Roger, are you there? Here he comes. I think. Roger, you're muted? All right, we'll give him two seconds. Go ahead, Mr. London. Is, is, go right ahead.
Yeah, yeah, no, that was a great presentation. And I just want to recognize all the hard work that the residents of Oak Hill Road has put in. What I'm not seeing here, though, is the action. I mean, I would have expected respectfully, the Board of Selectmen to ask Karen to start investigating some of these requests, especially the, the simple ones, right? Sort of maybe putting up the radar sign, asking the contractors why they paid over the sidewalks, right?
All due respect, Mr. Linden, I thought that that was one of the things we were going to do, was to have a conversation with Ms. Galligan and base and get her feedback based on these issues as well.
Yes, that's perfect.
Okay, no, that's great.
Yeah, and Mr. Linden, just to, to give, was able to actually meet with Ms. Galligan today and both Chief Paulus and Achilles. So they've been great and very supportive, but thank you for your support as well.
Yeah, because these are urgent safety issues. It's not like we're just sitting here because there's active things happening on these roads, right? So I just want to recognize that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Linden. Very much appreciated. Mr. Challen, we will give you one more shot. Up, he is there. Where did he go?
He's connected to audio.
Oh, he's connecting. Good evening, Mr. Challen. How are you? You are muted, sir. Sorry.
Can, can you hear?
There you go. We can. Welcome.
Technically, Challen, I'm not really used to Zoom meetings, you know. Three quick comments, and thank you for bearing with me. Well, I'm one of those folks that has been on Oak Hill for a long time, as most people know, nineteen seventy-four. I don't think I can do the math. And as a couple of the other speakers mentioned, things have changed a lot. And I won't, I won't go into the other times that we have brought this forward. But I just heard two comments I'd like to, I'd like to, I guess, mention. One is, I think it was, was it that mentioned that the speeds increases when you come over the hill, which is almost the opposite thing to do is you then head down to a dangerous corner. But what the, the only thing that concerned me is there were a couple of comments from the Select Board that mentioned, you know, there's a lot of this going on in town. There's a lot of issues about speed and traffic. And that's certainly very true. But I hope that that's not a reason to kind of fail to look at any one of these areas that has speed issues. So that's really it. I enjoyed, I appreciated a lot of the comments from the Select Board about their concerns and also the presentation. And thanks for letting me say a few words.
Muted, Lisa. Sorry. I thank you, Sam. That doesn't happen very often. No, thank you, Roger. And, you know, I think since this board has been together, been very receptive to, you know, listening to the concerns and trying to find ways. I think Pine Hill is, again, I'll bring Pine Hill up again, you know, I mean, the, the residents came to us and we tried to find some form of solution. Was it perfect? Maybe, maybe not, but hopefully it's making a difference. You know, we're working with the Flag Road Neighborhood now. So I don't think anybody here is, is just intending to pay any form of lip service. I mean, we are very concerned. And again, when, when I was one that said that, that, you know, that this is a concern on a lot of roads in town. I, I, we all get phone calls or comments all the time about it. It, I just don't want you to think that anybody's putting this off. I think we're just looking to get more information so we can find a path and find a solution for you.
No, not at all. I don't think that. I think Chelsea may have had a similar comment, okay, to you, Lisa. But listen, Karen and I will offer any part of our, of our property there next to the road for one of those speed signs, or two or three, whatever you like, okay? Free rent.
Awesome.
Same.
Awesome. I think Andrew offered as well. He actually said that he would pay the electricity. Wasn't that it, Andrew?
Yeah, you want to hook it up to my power meter? I'll, I'll pay the bill.
Yes, Sam, go ahead.
For one more quick thought, for your comment, Andrew, about the crosswalks, maybe a very cheap, cost-effective thing to do short term is you repaint those crosswalks, put up a couple of signs at each crosswalk, say, children crossing kind of thing, even though they don't go anywhere. That kind of visual cue, I think, might have some impact in terms of slowing people down for the possibility that maybe there's somebody who's going to be crossing there. I don't know.
Yeah, no, actually, it's, it's, go ahead, Marty, sorry.
Yeah, I just, it, it, it was unclear to me when the crosswalks were being talked about, whether it was just a question that they disappeared or whether there is a real need for their, those crosswalks to be back. Is it the latter?
So Marty, I think it's the crosswalks where all the side streets were. I, I can't speak to the other streets, but I do go down Walnut to connect to the trails that are there. So, you know, I walk on the side of the road by my house and then I, you know, walk across the street to Walnut, pushing the baby carriage. And, you know, kind of taking, taking our lives in our hands. And, you know, kind of taking, taking our lives in our hands. Um, if there was a crosswalk there, I would certainly appreciate one there because it connects you to the trails.
Okay, that, that, again, I just wanted to understand what it was. Because, I mean, what's happened on Route eighty-five um, north of Route thirty, and I, I, I thought as part of the, the um Main Street project that it was gonna be, there was gonna be one down at Fay as well, one of the, uh, the blinking um, crosswalks, which make a huge difference. You know, in a weird way, you know, I, I hear you in terms of the crosswalks and, and I think it's an important thing. But and I agree with you on the speed on Oak Hill, but man, it would be dangerous for, in some of those places, to have a crosswalk without some corresponding um, changes um, because of the way people fly, particularly coming over that hill.
Yeah, and, and it sounded like when I talked to Karen that that was part of the reason for them taking him out was because there wasn't a sidewalk there and what looked like an official crosswalk, it was just a painted crosswalk, that, you know, drivers might have been flying and not really think that that's someplace that somebody's gonna step out. And then people, when they have crosswalks, think it's a, uh, you know, a protection that they have and they can just step out and people will stop. So it's more of a liability and a concern from that perspective. But I think especially if we did a, uh, extended the sidewalk, at least to Walnut, um, and put a real, real intersection there, and maybe even a, a sidewalk light where you would press the button and people can walk across. I think that would be certainly advantageous.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, Andrew, thank you. Thank you to uh, everybody for coming, for your comments. Oh, Chelsea, go ahead.
Can I just um, respond to Mr. Challenge's um, comment about what I said? So I, I think the purpose of my comments, um, Mr. Challenge, was that we need to balance these requests as they come forward, and we need to make sure that we are responding um, appropriately across the board. Um, as Lisa said, I get phone calls. Um, I think probably many of us get phone calls about speeding and um, noises at night. So um, you know, I just want to make sure that as we address this, that we're being fair. Thank you.
All right.
May I, may I respond?
Sure.
I have my hand up, so, but I wouldn't hold on. Yeah, um, Chelsea, don't take my comment as an accusation, please. Uh, I've, uh, as a lot of folks know, I've, I've been where you are and have had to deal with these kinds of issues. You can't do everything at once, as everybody knows. So um, right, you gotta, you have to start somewhere. And, you know, you know, maybe Oak Hill's a place to start, maybe some other places are places to start, but uh, you just can't do everything at the same time. So it's very tough to balance things like speed throughout town. As, as you all know much better than I do, uh, because you're looking at it, uh, you're looking at it from, you know, a larger perspective than somebody that just lives on one of the streets that has traffic going fast. Thank you.
Okay, and I just want to acknowledge there's a comment in the chat from Tara and Mike, and I'm sorry when I pull it up to read, your last name goes away. So I just want to acknowledge uh, the comment that both the EPA and the World Health Organization have recommendations on safe decimal levels, Jake braking even when, sorry, I'm trying to move this down, even when properly muffled, exceed the decimal level of what is considered safe for a prolonged period of time. Decimal levels also are increased by motorcycle, loudmouthers and speeding cars, which are to be considered when discussing decimal levels, not just the Jake braking. So comment heard. Thank you very much uh, for making it. So Andrew, I think, I think the next steps are, I think we have some questions. You're very welcome, by the way. You know, we have some next steps. Uh, obviously, you guys, I, I thank you for coming. I thank you for bringing this forward and you'll be involved in the discussions. You know, um, as Mr. Linden is with, with Flag Road. You know, uh, we view you as, as part of the solution as well. So um, let's continue to work together and, and we'll get this on a future agenda after we can get some specific questions and stuff asked.
Perfect. Yeah, I'm available for any questions or anything you need us to do. So, but thank you again for all your time.
Great, gentlemen, thank you. And thank you for all the work you did, Andrew, in putting the presentation together.
No worries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next up, uh, public comment. If there's anyone that has a comment, please raise your hand. Mr. Linden, let's bring him back over.
Yeah, there's two things. Um, so this is great. Yeah, so you guys talked about the noise by law, right? And the last comment there that you just read, Lisa?
Yep.
That's also a noise by law issue, right?
It would apply, yep.
Yeah, I just want, want to make sure that gets into those discussions too. Right, we like truck, yep. Okay, uh, and I'd also like to make some comments on, on what you guys discussed too, in terms of the Flag Road uh, truck exclusion request. Just want to remind you guys, it's been four months uh, since the overwhelming vote at the town meeting uh, to pursue this truck exclusion. And you already have the information required to submit this to the ma- to the Mass DOT. And the road actually qualifies for an exclusion per the mass law. And the residents have asked you to act. And you guys might think that twenty-two thousand dollars, that's, that's fine. That's not that much money, right? Like, uh, I think it was Mark that mentioned that, right? But there's been so many studies already in this area. I, I know, like, at least two or three that adding all of those uh, uh, up, you know, plus twenty-two thousand more, uh, is just a waste of money. You just heard about Oak Hill Road. We need to spend, spend some money there instead. Right?
So
So the other thing here, right, is we're also spending a lot of time here, right? We valid support. We brought this up at one town meeting. Uh, I don't want to bring this up at yet another time to request for more, uh, more money. The number of trucks that we're talking about, as you've seen in these studies, especially the latest one, is so low that the impacted other roads are very low. It's an urgent safety issue, and I would like you guys to reconsider and act instead of continuing to waste uh, time and money on this issue. Uh, we don't need to spend any, any more tax money on this area in this regard. So um, if you do go ahead with the twenty-two thousand dollar study, I also want to make sure, and I think it was Mr. Stivers I mentioned this, we need to understand exactly what it covers. It will, I would be very surprised if twenty-two thousand dollars would cover all of Southborough in terms of these questions. So we need to make sure that that's clear. Also, if we don't get the additional spend approved in the town meeting in the fall, we still need to pursue this truck exclusion for this road because it's already um, qualifies. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and Mr. Linden, I, I will, I will add one thing that um, the I, the board is being very fair in, in what they're doing. I can tell you, I have received a handful of phone calls already from people on Main Street that are against moving the truck exclusion. I think there's, there's, yes, some studies have been done, but studies haven't been done on Main Street. And the concern with some of the people on Main Street as well is if you open that up, granted, there may be only six cars going down Flag, but if you open up Main Street, what is, what could the potential impact be from making that now be an available cut through? So I think the board has heard you, the board is working very hard with you, Mr. Linden, and we're trying to do the right thing for all of the taxpayers in the town. I think the study is gonna give us globally information on truck traffic, on where this truck traffic can go on various streets. So um, I, I appreciate your comments very much, and I appreciate you staying in tune. But at the same time, I just want to be clear that the, the board is, is not just sitting here and not working towards trying to find a solution for Flag. And unfortunately, I'm sorry that it's not as quick as, as some may think, but um, I think we're doing our due diligence. So I, I appreciate it. Thank you. And is there any other? Mr. Fling.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Fling.
Yeah, for a second time. Um, so, simply eighteen Main Street. Um, one of the things that I wanted to question was the um, or bring up is that there is a DPW uh, road repair line item that is kind of like a splash fund every year for, that's approved by town meeting. I was wondering if those funds could be allocated towards a, this um, study for the roads. We don't have to wait a couple of months for the town meeting. And we could also allocate the funds that are for road repair. And I would kind of argue that this is part of road repair in some sort of way as a DPW expense. And I'd wonder if that was a possibility.
Um, I don't want to answer that question because I'm not sure of the answer, but I, I, Mr. Purple, I don't know if you
I think, I, I think the safer answer is, you know, I think it's something to, to check with Ms. Galligan, whether it would be an acceptable chapter ninety expense.
Yeah, okay.
So, and I'm happy to do that and get back to the board.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Fling, and welcome to the Noise Bylaw Committee.
Thank you very much.
All right, any other public comments? I see no other hands raised. That being said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
Is there a
Second.
All right, uh, Mr. Dennington. Ms. Melonowski. Hi, Mr. Healy.
Hi.
Mr. Stivers.
Hi.
And Ms. Brushio, hi. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Marty, what's the next stop on your vacation?
Uh, I'm in Colorado for another ten days, and then lots of other states along the way.
Looking for a sixteen thousand foot peak.
Yeah, on, but, but for our September twenty-first meeting, I think I'll be in West Virginia. I think that's the schedule. So, but I'll let you know.
Awesome, thank you.